Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. May I ask you to please come to attention. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have a report from closed session or any opinion litigation to make?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The closed session, the council, of course, met on the matters that were set up in the open session agenda. No reportable action was taken on those matters. However, in litigation, we have just received the final ruling today from the court, the district court, on the group homes litigation, the two cases that are pending before Judge Selma and the motion for summary judgment. The city won virtually all of the issues on those motions that took away the challenge by the group home operators that they said we couldn't regulate based upon our general plan, and most importantly, found that the city was not discriminating against the disabled and enforcing its ordinance. This removes from the city the current legal threat to the ordinance at the trial court level and is an excellent victory for the city on this matter.
It's a good thing, everybody. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which we led by Councilman Don Webb, which we followed by the invocation by Jim DeBoo.
Please join me in the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I bring you greetings on behalf of the Newport Mesa Irvine Interfaith Council, a group of a variety of faiths, Christians, 57 of Christian groups, Buddhists, Baha'is, Muslims, and Jewish congregations. Let us bow our heads in a moment of prayer, please. We come together as citizens of Newport Beach who love this place that we live and work and play in. We're thankful for the men and women who give of their time and talent to serve on boards and commissions. We're thankful for the city staff that's dedicated to service. We're thankful for the first responders. We ask that you be with them and be with the men and women of armed services as they protect our country. We ask that we respond with civility, and hopefully more after this election cycle's over with.
Amen.
But that we treat each other with dignity and respect, that we listen openly to ideas, but we ask the council and the staff to do what's best for all of the city. Amen.
Thank you, Jim. Our first presentation today is for cultural arts checks to be presented by our City Arts Commission. Invite Robin Grant to the podium.
Mary Currie and council members. I'm Robin Grant, Chair of the Newport Beach Arts Commission. Tonight, the commission delivered to the clerk a copy for each of you of the Newport Beach Arts Commission Annual Report for 2009, 2010. At the outset, I want to thank the council for their very generous support of the arts, which makes it possible for the commission to provide quality free arts programs to the residents of and visitors to the city of Newport Beach. The Arts Commission experienced a record attendance by both artists and public at our annual juried art show held in the spring at the Central Library. Our season of concerts in the park consisted of the hugely talented Hutchinson's Concert at Grant-Hall Park in Corona del Mar and the UK Beat at Benita Canyon Sports Park. We also recorded record attendance with close to 1,000 people each night at the Ninth Annual Shakespeare by the Sea, featuring Julius Caesar and Twelfth Night. This year, the commission initiated a new program, museum tours. To date, there have been two sold-out tours to the Los Angeles County Museum of Art and a third sold-out tour to the J. Paul Getty Museum, and we anticipate a spring tour to the Huntington Museum and Gardens. The commission also continues to pursue many opportunities for art in the New Civic Center and adjacent parks, and this year commenced a continuing lecture series to heighten community awareness about art in public places. Once again, thank you to the council for continuing the support of the arts in our fine city so that we can continue all of these programs. Tonight, the Arts Commission is here to award the 2010, 2011 Cultural Arts Grants. City Council Policy I-10 recognizes the importance of promoting culture and arts within the city. The commission reviews requests for support from local arts groups and makes recommendations for funding to the city council. This year, the commission received written grant proposals from a number of organizations, and after careful deliberation, the following awards were approved. I would request that Mayor Currie assist me in making the awards. If all the recipients could come to the podium when their organization name is called and remain for a group picture after the last award, that would be appreciated. Baroque Music Festival. Festival Ballet Theater. Newport Beach Film Festival. The Newport Beach Arts Collection Advisory Committee, the Ruth Stover-Fleming Art Collection. The Newport Harbor Nautical Museum. Central Orange Coast YMCA. Looks like you have a presentation for the...
Oh, thank you.
You can hold that up in the picture. South Coast Repertory Theater. And Southland Opera. We'll look forward to all the wonderful programming these organizations will provide in the coming year. Thank you all and good luck.
I would like to thank Robin and her Arts Commission for all the work that they have done this year. They have really done an exceptional job of involving the city in art, and it hasn't been an easy job because of Robin and her fellow commissioners have done a wonderful job of giving us a variety. And so, thank you, Robin and the commission.
And thank you, Centennial Mayor Webb and council.
Thank you, Robin and members of the Arts Commission. We really have a great dedicated Arts Commission that do a tremendous job in the city. I want to thank them for their service and for how they really enhance our community through the arts. They do a great job year after year. Okay, notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or send them in the silent mode. Now is the time for announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, today, as a guest of the East Bluff PTA, I attended our Corona del Mar High School Home Tour. I didn't see any of the councilmen there. As a matter of fact, there were no guys on the tour. However, it was a wonderful success. A lot of beautiful homes in the community, and I always admire and respect the beautification that people do with their homes and willingness to share them with the community. And secondly, is that we just completed at the library the first season of What's Cooking, and it was nine very successful events. And Season Two is going to kick off January 18th with the executive chef of Five Crowns Restaurant. So if that kind of activity interests you, you'll want to register early. They are filling up pretty quickly. And then in November, the library will be participating in the National Novel Writing Month. And as you know, the great American novel has yet to be written, and so if you want to participate at the library, feel free to do so in November. And our writing stations and our Wi-Fi is always available, whether you want to participate in this contest or otherwise, just go to the library. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
I would disagree. The great American novel has been written, and it was written by Henry James. Our Bike Safety Committee had a number of recommendations, and one of them was a recommendation that the cycling community and the police department communicate better. And we had our first meeting, and I want to thank our police department. It was a terrific meeting with the bicycling community. The cycling people were very enthusiastic to have such a sympathetic ear from our chief, and it went extremely well. So that's one of our steps, along with the Sheroes. If you haven't been on Bayside Drive, go look at the Sheroes. We're moving along on many of our recommendations. And then I have a request. At the Harbor Commission meeting, there was a presentation on a marina for 2901 West Coast Highway, and this involves a very large charter boat. And I think it would be helpful to have a study session on this so that staff can get some direction from the council, because although it is an administrative matter, this whole issue of large charter boats, I think, involves more than just an administrative permit.
Councilmember Webb.
Well, I've had a number of people ask me how I'm doing on my goal to walk the city this year, and with only two meetings and a show up left, I have almost accomplished the goal. I'm within four or five miles of finishing the city. I'd walk right at 500 miles, and will be finishing up sometime in November.
Thank you. Councilmember Selich.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hen.
Nothing for me.
Just three items to note. First of all, since our last council meeting, I completed my eighth Meet the Mayor session at the Central Library. All told, I don't know, 80 to 100 people came out during the meetings that we have throughout the city and each council district. I truly appreciate everybody that did come out. It was great to talk to folks and to answer questions and to meet people and listen to your concerns, and I look forward to doing it perhaps sometime in the future. Secondly, I'd like to announce that on the 6th of November, we will be dedicating the Upper Bay Project. This is, as you know, a long time coming in terms of completing the dredging for the Upper Bay. 10:00 AM, I understand Senator Feinstein will be there, and it's really a great community celebration for a project that should hopefully last us another 20 years in terms of the bay. And then finally, as you may have read in the paper, all three of the bond rating agencies over the course of the last 10 days have awarded Newport Beach an underlying rating for the city of AAA, the highest possible rating, and have given our expected COPs the highest possible rating for COPs, AA+ AA2, from the three rating agencies. I'd like to just share a couple of things from the Fitch Report because it really provides a third-party validation of what the city's been doing. Fitch writes, "The city's financial profile is strong. The last three audited fiscal years and estimated actual results from fiscal year 2010 all produced surplus general fund operations resulting in the maintenance of high general fund balance levels. The city's OPEP, that's Other Post-Employment Benefits, is partially prefunded and costs are manageable. Management is exploring ways to deal with likely rising pension costs, including two-tiered systems, and has already had some success in negotiating increased employee contributions." The city's financial position is notably strong. Financial operations have produced surpluses in each of the past four fiscal years, some of them sizable, resulting in large and growing fund balances. Financial management policies are impressive. They include a contingency reserve equal to 12% of the general fund operating budget, operational reserves, a stabilization reserve, funding by operating surpluses, operating surpluses, and a 15-step fiscal sustainability plan adopted by the city council this year. I think this is the kind of validation from the rating agencies, Moody's, Standard and Poor's, and Fitch that I think demonstrates to the community that we are good fiscal stewards of the city here. I want to particularly thank Councilmember Hen, who made an invaluable contribution to the rating presentations in San Francisco, and also to our staff, who more than anybody else deserve to be recognized for the achievement of getting these highest possible ratings that could possibly be achieved. We're one of only five cities in California with AAA ratings from all three of the rating agencies. So congratulations to the city. Consent calendar.
All matters listed under consent calendar, Items 1 through 14, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Anything to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. Selich.
Number seven.
Number seven. Mr. Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Hen.
Nothing for me.
Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, just to note, items to pull, but just to note on number five, that the city continues to invest in roadwork. In this case, it's up at Jamboree and Fairchild up in my district by the Google Building, and we're going to be putting in some capacity improvements to keep the, or actually to improve the traffic flow. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
Just a comment that, thank you for the planning commission minutes. They're much more informative than they were two weeks ago.
Councilmember Webb.
I have none.
And I have none. Does any member of the audience have an item they'd like to pull besides number seven? Okay, seeing none. The staff, do you have an item to pull? Mr. Moser, this is the time. Number four, thank you. Mr. Nichols.
Thank you. I would like to see also number four. Number three, I'd like to have something compared up on. Number five. Number 13 and 14.
All right. Staff, anything to pull?
Four has been pulled. That was the item that we would have pulled.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Why yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar Items 1 through 14, with the exception of Items 3, 4, 5, 7, 13, and 14.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Item 3, Mr. Nichols.
I believe these items are of such importance that they do need more explanation than just to be pulled, and the titles do not state what is going on in them. On this particular one, this is a civil service ordinance, and after reading this again and going over what we spoke of, I mean, the staff and everyone in the last meeting, it appears that we're making the city manager, the titular head on all this, and that the votes or reinforcement of that position will not even be registered on the city council. And I think that there's times that that's appropriate, certainly at the department head level and so forth, and if this is a decision regarding broader pay issues and so forth, I believe it should also be concurred by the city council. So this is the area that I would like to see addressed, and am I right that this would be, right now, finally decided and decided not at the council meetings, not in an agenda like this, but decided by the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Mr. Nichols, I don't understand what you're asking. What positions are you talking about?
Well, any personnel positions within the city ultimately are going to be handled by the city manager. And my question is, is it seems that certainly at the higher level, that maybe you guys should also concur on this, and that the city should be aware that we have had several qualified candidates apply or none?
So you're suggesting the city council should have approval of department head and up appointments?
At some level, yes, and I'm suggesting department heads are probably the place to start.
The city charter is very clear, Mr. Nichols, that the city council has three reports. They are the city clerk, the city attorney, and the city manager. Everybody else, by the provisions of the city charter, report to the city manager.
This isn't a change. This isn't a change of the charter by having the city manager do these things. This is the way it's always been.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Are there any other speakers who'd like to speak on this topic?
It seems this is a change, or we wouldn't be voting on it.
Seeing none, may I bring it back for motion?
I move the recommended action.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
With Councilmember Rosansky absent, the motion carries.
Item 4, Mr. Moser, please come forward.
Yes, as you know, I sent you all a message late last night. My concern about this has to do not so much with the substance of what is being voted on, but the cost of publishing it. And there was an article printed in the... Oh, my name is Jim Moser. I live in District 3. There was an article that appeared in the Daily Pilot about a week ago, signed by Councilwoman Gardner, and the Charter Update Commission Chairperson, Marion Ferguson, said it would cost about $128,000 to publish the 500 or so pages of this. We're being told that if Measure V passes, the ordinance, that money can be saved by publishing it in summary form. I'm concerned that the first Measure V, if this is adopted tonight, Measure V will not be effective in time for that to happen, and also that the prerequisite measures that need to be observed in order to publish something in summary form under the government code that's going to be adopted have not been met. Those involved, publishing a fair and adequate summary in the paper five days in advance, having certified copies of the thing you're voting on tonight available in the clerk's office five days in advance, neither of which has happened. And if Measure V should not pass, as I explained in here, it's not totally obvious that our current charter requires the publication of the full text, so...
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Those are very good questions. Let me, for the benefit of the audience, just help people understand, this is the zoning code that we're voting on right now. It's 440 pages. In addition to the 440 pages, there are 50 pages of fold-out maps that are here. There is also, as part of the zoning code, it's in this envelope, it's a fold-out wall-sized map. The current city charter, and I'll ask the city attorney to clarify, requires that all of this, after the ordinance has already passed, be published in a newspaper and distributed to your home. Now, you can imagine what that would look like and what people would mostly do with it when they get it, but that's what the city charter currently requires that we do, which is why Measure V has been written to remove that requirement, because when the city clerk priced this out, it came out to a little over $127,000 to put all of this information, after it's passed, in a newspaper and throw it on people's doorsteps. So, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Moser raises some questions. First of all, do we really have to do that?
Yes, our city charter does require, Charter Section 414, does specifically state that all ordinances, each ordinance must be published at least once in an official newspaper. Some people, and Mr. Moser's raised Government Code 36933 and the use of that. We're not governed currently by the government code. However, if Measure V passes, we will be able to utilize the government code without a glitch inconsistent with our charter. So what Measure V would do is expressly authorize the city clerk to utilize the provisions of the government code to publish summaries of ordinances such as the zoning code. If Measure V does not pass, then yes, it would be $127,000 to publish that ordinance, and frankly, that's what our charter otherwise states we should do and directs. At this point in time, I have to recommend that, you know, to staying with our charter, and if Measure V does not pass, I would be recommending publishing that ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Kiff, $127,000, is that enough money to hire a police officer or fireman?
That's about one, yes.
Yeah, right.
Including benefits.
One, right. So here's the issue for the voters. If you think that publishing this and throwing it on your front step in the form of a newspaper is a good use of taxpayers' money, you should vote no on B. If you think that should be taken out of our charter, you should vote yes on B. Now, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Moser raised some other questions about procedural requirements related to how we've got to this point so far with this item. Are you confident that we have followed all the procedural requirements relative to the adoption of the zoning ordinance through tonight?
Yes, we've checked with the city clerk, and in fact, the provisions that would allow us to publish a summary pursuant to the government code have been followed, just in case Measure V passes. And while that Measure V will not be technically actually enforced until the election results are certified, I believe it's appropriate for us to proceed forward using the government code once the vote has been had.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this matter? Please come forward.
Lori Morris, West Newport. If that were the only issue concerning Measure V, that would be fine. What you're saying right now, it would save money, wouldn't have to publish all this stuff, but there are 14 other issues that are rolled into Measure V.
The issue here is Item 4, the zoning code.
Right, but you made it the point that there is, this would save everybody money. You made a point last time to say how much money that would be, over, what, close to $100,000. Your clerk had that right at her fingertips. So when you bring that issue up, it has to be addressed. Yes, I would vote yes on B if that were the only item, but it's not. There are 14 other items in there that we, as residents, should be able to vote yes or no on, not all rolled into one item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Please come forward. Tom Billings, Newport Beach. I want to second what this lady's pointed out.
it when they get it, but that's what the city charter currently requires that we do, which is why Measure V has been written to remove that requirement, because when the city clerk priced this out, it came out to a little over $127,000, to put all of this information, after it's passed, in a newspaper and throw it on people's doorsteps. So, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Mosher raises some questions. First of all, do we really have to do that?
Yes, our city charter does require, Charter Section 414, does specifically state that all ordinances, each ordinance must be published at least once in an official newspaper. Some people, and Mr. Mosher's raised government code 36933, and the use of that, we're not governed currently by the government code. However, if Measure V passes, we will be able to utilize the government code without a glitch and consistent with our charter. So what Measure V would do is expressly authorize the city clerk to utilize the provisions of the government code to publish summaries of ordinances such as the zoning code. If Measure V does not pass, then yes, it would be $127,000 to publish that ordinance, and frankly, that's what our charter otherwise states we should do and directs. At this point in time, I have to recommend that, you know, to staying with our charter, and if Measure V does not pass, I would be recommending publishing that ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Kiff, $127,000, is that enough money to hire a police officer or a fireman?
That's about one, yes.
Yeah, right.
Including benefits.
One, right. So here's the issue for the voters, if you think that publishing this and throwing it on your news, on your front step in the form of a newspaper is a good use of taxpayers' money, you should vote no on B. If you think that should be taken out of our charter, you should vote yes on B. Now, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Mosher raised some other questions about procedural requirements related to how we've got to this point so far with the, with this item. Are you confident that we followed all the procedural requirements relative to the adoption of the zoning ordinance through tonight?
Yes, we've checked with the city clerk, and in fact, the provisions that would allow us to publish a summary pursuant to the government code have been followed, just in case Measure V passes. And while that Measure V will not be technically actually enforced until the election results are certified, I believe it's appropriate for us to proceed forward using the government code once the vote has been had.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this matter? Please come forward.
Lori Morris, West Newport. If that were the only issue concerning Measure V, that would be fine, what you're saying right now, it would save money, wouldn't have to publish all this stuff, but there are 14 other issues that are rolled into Measure V.
The issue here is item four, the zoning code.
Right, but you made it the point, that there is, this would save everybody money, you made a point last time to say how much money that would be, over, what, close to $100,000, your clerk had that right at her fingertips. So when you bring that issue up, it has to be addressed. Yes, I would vote yes on B, if that were the only item, but it's not. There are 14 other items in there that we, as residents, should be able to vote yes or no on, not all rolled into one item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, please come forward.
Tom Billings, Newport Beach, I want to second this, what this lady's pointed out. You know, you're pitching one item as a reason to vote yes on V. Again, there's 15, it's no way to govern, to complicate for voters, in voters' minds to try and figure out 15 in one vote. It's too much for them to understand. Some of the, the, the 15 are okay, but some of them are not. So it's just wrong to try and politicize it here tonight, to vote yes on it because of this one item.
Thank you. Mr. Billings, anybody else?
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. I was at the last council meeting, and we were supposed to be taking up the zoning code that we had worked so hard on in the various sessions, and I was trying to get some clarity on that. However, that wasn't even brought up, the commercial aspects of the code and so forth, that are also in the zoning code, not just the residential rezoning, is also in this. And I believe people don't really understand this, this is a huge change in what's going on, and we need to see this. I think it should be clearly done. I would also point out that the Planning Commission turned down the code, it was brought back and passed by them, although the item wasn't on the gen, on the agenda, and, and they didn't ask to have it put there, at least not one of them said they did. Okay, I'd like to ask further a couple other things on the zoning code particularly. This, the zoning code says that our zoning, and this is only on like four or five areas of the city, it isn't on every area of the city, because anything that has a code and regulation is, is not taken up on this zoning code. Okay, so where are we talking about? Old Corona del Mar, the, the Balboa Island, which has been conveniently pulled from this, the peninsula, the far, along the water going west, those are the main areas, there are some smaller ones. What I said is, basically, they have pulled Balboa Island, that's not even going to be considered. In Corona del Mar, we have a different zoning than does others. We have bigger lots, we have more side stroke, we have more open area, we have more architectural things on it, and yet, we have a 1.5 zoning, whereas Balboa Island, for instance, has two, and it's not even being discussed. So do all other areas. And I'm just saying, so it's not based just on land area, it's based on something else as well. And the peninsula, I've talked about that, I have one more comment. I could not download these various parts, I tried today. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly why that occurred, but I was trying to get some of these answers. I think these things should be discussed, and it's, and it's time to do that.
Thank you, Dick. Any other speakers on this matter? All right, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back, is there a motion?
We do, sorry.
Just one clarification.
We have a couple of clarifications that we want to offer too, but I'll let Councilmember Gardner speak first.
Probably going to anticipate me, so go ahead.
Mr. Campbell.
I'm sorry, ma'am, please come forward. State your name, please.
My name is Judy Rosner, and I've been a professor of public policy at UCI in the Business School for over 30 years, and I must admit, I've lived on Lido for over 50 years, and I haven't participated much in city government. I'm about to be 81, so I figured it's up to someone else, but I'm confused. I don't understand, when you said that number three, under B ordinance, doesn't need to be voted on, that it's the same, you're doing the same thing you did, then why is it here to be, why are we thinking about it?
We have second reading.
What?
The second reading.
There's a first reading, and a public hearing, and then a second reading, so it comes to the city council twice.
No, no, what she means, what I was saying is that we're not changing the aspect of the city manager, but there are other aspects of the civil service ordinance that are being changed.
Yeah, the gentleman before, I don't know who he is, said, he couldn't understand this, but I don't understand when both the female members of the council.
I understand what you're saying.
Could you give me an answer?
Yeah, that, what I was talking about, because Mr. Nichols was responding to the city manager doing all the hires, except for the three things that we have.
I understand that.
Well, that is what we've always done.
Right.
But there are other aspects of the civil service ordinance that are changed, and that's why we're voting on it.
But you both said there were no changes.
No, I meant to what he was referring to, in terms of the city manager, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
Okay, so there are other changes in there which we don't know about, but you're saying the only thing that wasn't changed was the delegation to the city manager, is that correct?
Now, Mr. Nichols was asked, was suggesting that the city council take responsibility for more personnel managers beyond the three.
I understand that, yeah.
That was not at issue.
Okay. But there are other things in here that did constitute a change.
They're in the report, and they're in the ordinance, so if you read it, you'll know about it.
Yeah, no, I haven't read it, I just didn't understand if there were no change, why.
That was my mistake, I wasn't clear on it.
All right, Mr. Campbell.
Back to the zoning code, this is the second reading of the zoning code. At the prior meeting, two weeks ago, the city council did suggest and ask for five changes, and those are in attachments handwritten, page five, six, seven, eight, and nine, and specifically, Ms. Gardner was referring to the 50-foot buffer for environmental sensitive habitat areas, it's in there.
Actually, I wasn't, I was going to say that Balboa Island is 1.5 and not 2.0.
I'm going to, I'm going to get to that point, because I think that's an important point to correct, for the record. I think Mr. Nichols incorrectly states what the zoning code does. The zoning code covers the entire community, and covers over old Corona del Mar, Balboa Island, and the peninsula. We aren't changing the floor area limit for Corona del Mar, Balboa Island, or the peninsula, and the peninsula's actually 2.0, not 1.5. All of these issues were vetted through the review process. It was 45 meetings with the general city advisory committee, made up of three council members and three planning commissioners, over three years. We had several hearings with the planning commission as well. And I think Mr. Nichols was referring to an issue where the planning commission initially did not recommend approval of the draft, and what we did is, we came back at a subsequent meeting, and it was on the agenda, it was properly noticed, and we made some recommended changes to the code, and that one, the planning commission did endorse that version of the code. And that's what's been brought forward to the city council tonight, so it wasn't done without proper notice. And the planning commission did endorse a version of this with a four to three vote, if you recall. The last thing I wanted to point out is that there really was one, as you can imagine, this is a 440-page document, there's a variety of different changes, and since our last meeting, we discovered a clerical error that we wanted to just bring to your attention, we wanted to include it in there, it's a clerical error, it's not substantive, and therefore, we can go ahead and include it now. That's really on section 238, 100, C1A. There is a reference to a date in that section of May 21, 2008, and it's really, it needs to be stricken, it actually makes that section null and void. And it was intended to be removed, and we just never got around to it. As you, you also will recall that, it is a 440-page document, there are going to be some other clerical mistakes, and maybe some other substantive ones, and we kind of anticipate that, and as we work this thing through, we do anticipate coming back to council, probably four to six months from now, with a cleanup ordinance on other areas, and we'll bring all those to the council's attention with due proper public notice.
Thank you.
So that's my report for this evening, and available for questions.
There's no further discussion or questions, Mr. Campbell, is there a motion?
I move the recommended action.
With Mr. Campbell's noted changes?
With the noted changes.
Please vote.
I second it, by the way.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item five, Mr. Nichols, you're back up again, I believe.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. These seem like minor things, each of these resolutions, but they're rather major, and it seems to me that a discussion should be held by the council before they're just automatically passed in one fell swoop. This is the Jamboree Road improvement, and a lot of people have seen this posted, that something's going to be done. Not too many of them have any idea what it is, and it would be awfully nice if we could see this. It's going to be one of the major improvements done to the road system, and Jamboree up by the freeway is, that carries a lot of traffic. So what I would like, if it's possible, is just to have a description of the project by the staff or someone from the council, so that people understand what it is. There's no description here.
It's the Jamboree Bridge widening, we're going to widen the bridge on Jamboree that crosses, excuse me?
Yeah, actually, that is correct.
I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
We have the Jamboree Bridge widening that's coming up, we're working through some right-of-way issues.
Right, you're right.
This particular project, I think Councilman Selich has been also very involved with it, is located on Jamboree Road, and we currently have a level of service that's an F, so it's like a report card, F is not good. So we're trying to get a better grade, and we're going to achieve that through some capacity improvements. So that would be located along Jamboree.
There is a big diagram in the staff report, it looks like this, shows the improvements as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other comments or questions on this matter? Any other members of the audience who'd like to speak on this matter?
I move the recommended action.
Okay. Seeing none for the speakers, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, item seven, Mr. Selich.
Thank you, mayor. I've got some real concerns about this item, but in deference, mayor, to your passion for this subject and the long agenda this evening, I'm not going to go into those, but suffice it to say, I still think it's premature until we get a recommendation back from the Parks Commission, so I'd recommend that we hold this over and bring it back at the same meeting we get the recommendation from the Parks Commission on the park naming.
I'd second that.
The, the point of the item is to solicit recommendations for the commission, who will plan the monument. I've, I've tried to hear your concerns, Councilman Selich, and the plan would be not to bring any item back to the city council relative to the naming of the park, until both PBNR and the commission, who would put a monument in the park, or whatever recognition we want to put for President Reagan. And I think we've learned that there's more than one way to do things in the city. So let's be clear about that, I acknowledge that, I think we all should acknowledge that, there's more than one way to do things. And so I think if, I think we can get to where you want to be, Mr. Selich, by ceding the commission, and then letting both the commission and PBNR bring a recommendation back to the council, and we can look at an entire package with all of the private financing and all of that in one fell swoop.
Well, what you're suggesting here is that we get a little bit pregnant, and I don't think there is such a thing, and either we're going to have a commission and go all the way or not, and it just seems to me it's premature to establish a commission tonight, so I'll stand on that.
Mr. Rozansky.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little ambivalent about this thing, too, and, and believe me, I thought President Reagan was a great president, and he did a lot of good things for this country, I mean, there's others that would disagree, and so, and we've seen that in some of our emails. I'm not against honoring him, I guess I look at this more like, kind of like the 1-1 commission, where they, you know, it's a group within the city, they've elected to support a cause, I support that cause as well, but it's not really a city-run thing, the city, we work in conjunction with them, I think, and we support them as well, but I would much rather see this as some kind of an independent group, certainly the people who would apply to the commission could easily apply to that same group, or band together, and work with the city, or work with our city staff, to find an appropriate way to honor President Reagan. I'm not saying we should stop the process that we started with the Parks Commission, if they want to review the possible renaming of a park, but it is, I don't know that, I mean, we had a centennial, I think, that was fairly universal, and we had a commission for that, and that was a city-sponsored event, supported, but this item, although I think, you know, there's going to be many, many residents that would support this thing, there are a few that are not going to, and I, I'd just like to see it come up that way, and I would support it that way.
Well, I would, I would indicate that when we did the memorial for the Marines, we formed a committee exactly the same way, through the city council, who, who was responsible for planning of the memorial and raising the funds for it, so this is completely consistent with the 1-1 action.
If I might, irrespective of the timing issues, which we can discuss, I think that the issue has the potential for a lot of passion, so I'll try to make my comments very measured, and that is representing the Benita Creek, excuse me, Benita Canyon subdivision, you know, that's not an Irvine Company moniker, and if it was, that'd be okay, too, but it refers to a geographic area, and I've heard from them, and after hearing from them, I did speak with the mayor, and, and I appreciate that you would be sensitive to make sure that we hear and evaluate the views of all the residents. My concern would be, though, if the, if this commission got involved with siting, that seems to be unclear with me, I would think that the appropriate body to hear and evaluate resident issues on siting would be a PBNR or the council. It would seem like this commission would have a lot of momentum to put it potentially there, and so that would be my concern.
Well, I think there are, thank you, and I appreciate those thoughts. There are two concerns here, I think, first is, you know, what should we do, and where should we do it, and what, and how, how do you pay for it? And so you could answer the, where should it go with PBNR, but the rest of that requires really this commission to answer it. So they, I agree with you, they would not be involved in siting, that would come through PBNR, and of course, the ultimate decision would rest with the city council. The logistics of this are, the president's birthday, his, his centennial is February 6th, so if we're going to do something in a timely way for that, we need to advertise and solicit names, and, and give folks time to do that before that. So it's a sort of a, you know, a clever way to try and kill the proposal by sort of doing this this way. So, but that's where we are. I would note that President Reagan, while I understand, and I received probably as many emails as anybody else, has had a, you know, people are controversial, some people are battling the battles of the 80s, and some people are wedded to the name of Benita Canyon Park, although it only dates to 2003, and before 1994, the property was actually in the city of Irvine. But President Reagan did receive 77% of the vote, nearly eight out of 10, last time he was on the ballot in Newport Beach. Further discussion? All right, then, Mr. Selich has a motion, Mr. Kim, okay? Mr. Selich's motion is to, what is your motion, Mr. Selich?
Hi, are you calling for public comment?
Yes, we'll have.
The motion's to continue until we get the recommendation from the Parks Commission and bring it back at the same meeting.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, public comment.
Okay. So I wanted to comment on the Reagan Centennial Commission, so, I mean, I think that history, with the help of his biographer, Lou Cannon, will frame Ronald Reagan's diverse accomplishments and his legacy. I mean, we all remember when the Berlin Wall fell, and it was a very touching moment. But however, whatever your perspective on the Reagan administration, this request just seems like an unnecessary diversion of resources, and that it's creating some precedence. So I have the same concern about what generated this, the interest beyond the centennial, is there a private group that said, we want to drive this? As we saw with the Arts Commission, there are a lot of times where private groups get involved and drive things, and generally, that has a positive effect, so, you know, I haven't seen that come forward. There are a lot of memorials for Ronald Reagan, I mean, you can go to the Reagan Library up in Simi Valley, you can go visit his ranch, if you know people that are well-connected, and several of my neighbors have been there recently, and you can fly through Ronald Reagan Airport, as I did last week. So I'm not quite sure we need any physical memorials at any rate. It's a diversion of city staff, especially park and recreation resources. All the departments are under budget pressure, I talked to another department today, they've lost three staff members, and they've cut half a million dollars from their contracting budget. So without a budget being proposed, the question is really, what is the potential financial impact, and just the pressure of putting yet another activity on city staff, so that's a concern. And finally, our park names generally restore, refer, as it's been mentioned, to city landmarks or to people of note in Newport Beach. Now, I understand that Mr. Reagan got 70% of the vote, 77% of the vote, in his last election in Newport, but given the percentage of Republican representation in Newport, is that really that much of an accomplishment? So, whereas, on the other hand, you know, Benita Canyon, which has been brought forward as a park to be renamed for Reagan, well, personally, I drive up MacArthur every day, and the fact that it's named Benita Canyon is basically the only way that I can tell Benita Canyon from Bison Road, when I'm giving people directions. So, you know, we have a, kind of a theory, we name parks after people that have been important to Newport, or after landmarks, and we really should continue that. And, and finally, again, this seems like, you know, there are many ways to honor Ronald Reagan, I'm not sure it takes a commission and a memorial. There could be many thoughtful letters, as you've written, Mr. Curry, in both the Independent and the Pilot, by people who have personal experience, there are many ways to reach out and talk about his legacy, and I encourage you to consider them. Thank you.
I wouldn't know, we do have 54 parks in our city, 19 are named for subdivisions or neighborhoods, 15 are named for streets, 12 are named for geographic places like Coastal Peak, four are named for schools, including Lincoln, two, Grant Howell and Coastal Peak. Four are named for schools, including Lincoln. Two, Grant Howell and Bob Henry, were named for actual people, and one is named for veterans. Are there any other speakers on this matter? All right, let's bring it back. You've heard Mr. Selich's motion. Please vote.
With Mayor Protam Hen Curry.
I voted no.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, with Mayor Protam Hen, Mayor Curry, and Councilmember Diggle voting no, and Councilmember Webb abstaining, the motion fails.
Okay. Item 13. Wait a minute.
Substitute motion.
Oh, the motion fails, I'm sorry. So I will offer a motion that we approve the item. With the proviso that it's coming back to the council, once PBNR's looked at it, once the commission has looked at it, so that the city council has a full view of what the idea is that we're proposing to do, what it's going to cost, who's going to pay for it, and all of the details related to that.
If I might just clarify my vote, I support honoring the President. I don't want the committee involved with determining the site.
Committee, the commission will not be involved. That'll be a PBNR city council decision.
Thank you.
They may make a recommendation of somebody, but it will be PBNR and the city council.
Second.
Second. Please vote.
With Councilmembers Selich, Rosansky, and Gardner voting no, and Councilmember Webb abstaining, the motion fails.
All right. Well, we'll bring this back in some form or fashion somehow, once we, once we figure this out.
Those guys are tough poker players.
In seven years on the council, that is a first for me, for sure.
Okay. Item 13. Mr. Nichols, it's your turn. Come on back. I've had my turn.
My question was the Human Services grant that we had here. I am Christian, do my charity, and I'm happy to do that. The question is, is should it be done by the city, and under what circumstances, and what groups? And I would like some guidelines there, especially when we're including Newport Harbor High without any functional grouping to that, that it isn't going to the orchestra or the swimming pool or something like that.
I thought it was going for, it couldn't, wasn't it? Athletic equipment?
Mr. Kiff, can you enlighten us there?
Yeah, let me give the public some background on this. This is a process that the council's been going through since 1985. And it, it authorizes the council every year to give $25,000 and to break that apart to various groups. And typically, Newport Harbor High is applied, and it's their ASB that does this. So they, they help to offset their associated student body costs. And for some reason, CDM has never applied. I wish they would. But fairly typical that we award this to Newport Harbor High as one of the six.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience further wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, let me bring it back. Is there a motion?
I move the recommended action. Second.
Please vote. Item.
Carries unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols, final at bat, ninth inning. Come on down.
This is a grant program that's given to pay utilities for people that are very poorly or very poor off. It seems inappropriate in Newport Beach, because chances are, if the people have owned the property, which that's one of the conditions in order to get their income down to this level, they basically have a million dollars in that bu, in the budget, almost. It seems that maybe they have to sell the home, but that happens to many people. So I, my question is, is why are we spending so much time on this area, and is it worthwhile?
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers in the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move the recommended action. Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is oral reports from city council members on committee activities. Councilmember Diggle.
Yes, Councilmember Gardner and some of the staff, we met with the Army Corps of Engineers. And as the mayor mentioned, we're going to be completing the, celebrating the completion of the Upper Bay dredging. And the Corps expressed a desire to let out a contract in 2011 for the Lower Bay. We still have a couple more hurdles, but they feel as if there's some funding in place in order to do that. And then they were very encouraged by the city moving forward with our Rhine Channel dredging early next year. So, thank you.
Do you have anything to add, Councilwoman?
Also, that they were looking, talking about the whole area of Newport Slough and the salt marsh there, of coordinating those efforts so that those areas can be dredged, our part as well as their part will coordinate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
The Newport Bay Executive Committee met, and we've been talking about the selenium issue. And there's a proposal for a new method of removing selenium. And we're going to have to pay some money down the road, one way or the other, and it's going to be at least six figures for a number of years, I'm supposing. But they'll be calling a meeting of the city managers and the public works director to decide how to allocate those costs between the various cities and the county and the other entities that participate in this agreement. So Dave, you'll be helping to determine how much we do owe on that.
Thank you. Mr. Webb?
I have none.
Mr. Selich?
I have none.
Mr. Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mr. Hen?
And none for me.
And I have none. Item 15, public hearings, award of non-exclusive solid waste collection franchise to United Pacific Waste to California Corporation. We will open the public hearing. Mr. Kiff?
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is, involves actually a charter requirement, currently, associated with awarding a franchise to, in this case, United Pacific Waste. That staff report is in your packet, and I won't make anything further. You're used to seeing so many of these. So unless folks have any questions, that would conclude my comment.
Is there any member of the audience who would like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Move the item.
Bring it back for motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item 16, Newport Business Plaza.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a public hearing on Newport Business Plaza. As is typical for our public hearings, we would have a brief staff report, followed by the applicant making a presentation if need be, then public comments, and then you have a relatively specific list of items that we're asking you to approve, should you deem that appropriate. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Janet Brown and Jim Campbell, as they tune up the projector. Probably Jim first. Okay, here's Jim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The Newport Business Project, Newport Business Plaza project site is located in statistical area L4, the airport area of the general plan land use element, at the most northeasterly corner of the city. The project site is located here at the corner of Campus Drive and Jamboree Road, at 4699 Jamboree Road and 5190 Campus Drive. The project site consists of two parcels of land and is currently developed with a bank building, commercial offices, and a surface parking lot. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing site and redevelop it with an approximately 46,000 gross square foot commercial business plaza. The plaza would be comprised of a bank building, two commercial office buildings, and a parking structure. In order to implement the project, the applicant is requesting the following items: an amendment to the general plan to increase the development limit by 11,544 gross square feet; an amendment to the Cole Center Newport Plan Community Text to increase the allowable building area by 18,346 net square feet; and approval of a tentative parcel map for commercial condominium purposes, and to combine the two lots into a single parcel of land. On August 5th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to review the project and the related applications. The commission found the project to be consistent with the general plan policies and the Cole Center Newport development standards, and they also determined that the required findings for approval of a parcel map could be made. At this hearing, the commission also reviewed the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. Based on the analysis in the mitigated negative declaration, all potentially significant impact to the environment can be mitigated to a level of less than significant with mitigation measures, which are included in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. At the conclusion of the public hearing, Planning Commission voted six ayes and one excuse to recommend to city council that the project be adopted as requested, and the mitigated negative declaration also adopted. Under Charter Section 423, and as provided in Council Policy A18, the city council is required to review general plan amendments to determine if a vote is required for the amendment. As indicated in the staff report, the proposed general plan amendment does not exceed any of the three thresholds that would require a vote per Charter Section 423 if city council were to approve the general plan amendment. This project site is located in the airport environs land use plan planning area, and is required to be referred to the airport land use, land use commission for determination of consistency. At its meeting on October 21st, the airport land use commission voted unanimously to find the project consistent with the airport environs plan. Chapter 1545 of the municipal code includes a provision that development agreements are required when city council reviews and approves general plan amendment projects that are located in the airport area and include non-residential development, such as this project. This chapter also includes a provision that the city council may waive the requirement if it can make certain findings. Staff has provided facts in support of those findings in the staff report, and if city council concurs with those facts, staff recommends that the requirement for a development agreement be waived. However, if city council disagrees, we would need to postpone this hearing to a later date to allow time to prepare a development agreement and bring the project back for your consideration and review.
Janet, what are the considerations for that? That, what are the benefits?
Considerations, the findings that must be made?
No, the benefits for the city. Can you just go over those?
I'm sorry?
The benefits for the waiver of the development agreement?
The three findings that need to be made is if the legislative act is considered minor in nature, we consider this project to be somewhat minor in nature. The other finding is, is whether or not the project provides a significant benefit to the city. We believe that the project could benefit from the redevelopment of the site. And then the third finding is the nature of the project is such that neither the city nor the developer would benefit from a development agreement. Some of the provisions that are required to be included in a development agreement include development standards and things of that nature. And those development standards and regulations are included in the planned community development regulations. And we also believe, or staff believes, that the redevelopment of this project site over a single 14-month phase would not, a development agreement would not be necessary in order to provide for the redevelopment of the site, as it would be done in a single phase over 14 months.
However, we have charged other developers across the city significant fees for requesting more square footage, or not even more, just even moving square footage. Is that taken into consideration?
Well, also, it's, I mean, I can see that it may not be a benefit to the developer, but I can certainly see benefits to the city.
Yeah, exactly.
Development agreement. And also that, that these are minor, we always get into these semantic discussions, you know, what is minor? My view of a public view is, what's minor impact? It was not like some of the others. And, I mean, these are fairly significant square footages. So again, I'm questioning whether that's a minor impact. But I just have a question on, the decrease in trips is sort of a sleight of hand, isn't it? Because would a bank, I mean, a bank is a bank, and whether the bank is, has a certain square footage or not, really doesn't matter in terms of how many people might use it. Now, are they going to reduce the kinds of banking they do? Why would just a smaller bank mean fewer trips? Because there's a lot of online banking, there's a lot of things that people don't come in for anymore with all the ATMs and everything. So that, there's, I wasn't quite sure why. Or is that just a formula that we use, and logic doesn't really apply?
Well, I wouldn't say that logic doesn't apply in that instance, but you are correct that the traffic model takes certain assumptions based on land uses, and the mix of land uses here actually reduces the traffic. It is a slightly smaller bank, but we have more general office in the area. So there's actually a net decrease. You know, in staff's recommendation to suggest to waive the development agreement, you know, again, we felt that it was a minor project. The benefits are all, public improvements in the area are all there, infrastructure is there. Redevelopment of the site would be ensured if they go forward with the project. Now, there could be a monetary transaction, I suppose, if that's what the council wants to do. But again, it's a recommendation. If the council chooses a different policy, they can.
Well, I would say, too, it's economic revitalization. It's an opportunity to revitalize that area, which is sorely needed. And I don't view it as an opportunity for exactions and see if we can squeeze a few dollars out of the applicant. You know, I see it as a really strong environment and economic revitalization. The property is getting a makeover. That's a huge benefit to the area and to the city.
And I would agree with that, Councilmember Diggle.
I have a, could you clarify for me? I'm just not understanding. We have a general plan amendment of almost 12,000 square feet. But then there's a plan, we amend, increase the building area to 18,000. So which, do I combine the numbers? Do I subtract them? How do I get the actual number?
Well, the general plan amendment is based on gross square footage, and that's the number necessary to achieve the project intensity that's being requested. The numbers that are in the planned community text are actually based on a net square footage basis. That's one of the reasons why the numbers are different. And this is a little bit higher. There is a discrepancy in the actual square footage on the ground consistent with the actual planned community text. And so what this will do is it will provide sufficient square footage to build the buildings requested, and there would be no discrepancy in the future. There wouldn't be any additional entitlement granted beyond what they're requesting to build at this point in time. So it is, it is an unusual number, but it is cleaning up a discrepancy in the square footage to the PC text.
So there are two numbers, and we're sticking by that?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the conclusion of staff report?
Staff's recommendation is for city council to adopt a resolution documenting the following actions, which is an approval of the environmental document, approval of the general plan amendment, and the tentative parcel map, and a waiver of the development agreement requirements.
Thank you.
And then we recommend that you bring forth an ordinance approving the amendment to the Cole Center Planned Community Development Text and pass to second reading on November 9th. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see the applicant here. Would you like to make any brief comments before we?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Meg Shockley, and I represent the applicant with regard to the project before you, WPI Newport LLC. We would like to let you know that the applicant is in attendance here tonight, the principals are, as well as the project architect, Ware Malcolm, represented by Evan Robby. He can answer any questions you have regarding the proposed project design or specifications. We would like to thank the staff for all their hard work over the years in preparing for this hearing. And we would like to thank you for taking the time to review the staff report and all of the information that has been presented to you in furtherance of this application. Thank you for your consideration to allow the applicant to improve this very important corner in Newport Beach, which serves as one of the gateways from Irvine. At this time, the council would like, if the council would like, Evan Robby will come to the podium and briefly describe the proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robby?
Good evening. I'm Evan Robby from Ware Malcolm Market Tax.
Mr. Robby?
Yes, sir.
And in the interest of, you know, quitting while you're ahead, I think there's a consensus by some of my colleagues that we may not need a presentation?
That's what I was going to ask. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. If not, then I'm glad they sit down.
Okay. Well, we know where to find you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Hi. On this item...
grid, and the information's probably all there, but if you're a person who does well with pictures, it's hard to understand how this will impact those of us who live in the area directly adjacent to the planned development. And that's my first question. And my second question is related to the mitigated negative deck. It's not really clear to me what the environmental impacts would be. I probably need to go back and read it, but this hasn't come in front of EQuAC or other committees to look at, so it's hard to say if mitigated negative deck was the right direction. So that's my error in this case. But again, it would be helpful just to have a brief presentation on the project. The staff report did include a map at a minimum if they could explain what the types of buildings would be and where they would be sited so the public could see that. It would be helpful. Thanks.
All right, let's get the testimony, then maybe we'll put a couple of slides up there to make it clear for folks. Other speakers, please.
Lori Morris, West Newport. Yeah, I think, finding out exactly what that is, I tried to pull up several staff reports today and could get nothing in regards to this or any of the other items that have come before. There's a couple of questions I have as far as the development agreement. Of course, we've all got a real crash course on development agreements lately, so I don't know why that's being waived in this instance and what exact amount fees are. I know you were saying it was a very low amount, and low amount can be different for me than it is for you, so I'd like to know what that is. And then what is the entitlements that they're actually getting through this? Maybe they'll answer that through their presentation. And then, like Laura says, does this affect, there are certain things that haven't been answered. I know green light is in effect, does it hit that mark? I don't, I wasn't able to bring it, okay, so, no. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this matter? All right, seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Let's bring it back, and maybe either staff or the architect can do just a couple of slides to show people visually what this is going to look like. Let's do that right now, because I, to respond to Laura's question.
Mr. Mayor, as we prepare that presentation, I just want to make sure everyone understands that the actual architecture and the site planning and design are really what the applicant is proposing. The applications before you are really for a general plan amendment to increase the entitlement, corresponding Planned Community Development Plan text, which is really zoning for the property to increase the entitlement, which would allow this building or some version of it. So it's not going to be guaranteed to look like this, although the applicant has every intention to build this. Other point I wanted to make is Ms. Curran indicated that EQuAC hadn't seen this. This type of a project does not require, environmental document does not require EQuAC's review based upon the charge of EQuAC, so just wanted to bring that to light and...
Thank you. Someone want to explain what we're looking at?
So, quick run view is, up on the screen you'll see, this is the primary elevations of the building. View from Jamboree Road looking south, it's the southeast-facing elevation, and then a view from Campus Drive. Adjacent to the view from Campus Drive currently is, I believe, a Staples Building, one-story tilt-up construction. And then adjacent to the Jamboree Road elevation is current UCI property. If you look over on the blackboard over back behind me, you'll see a site plan of the proposed project location. Again, as Janet stated, it's at the corner of Campus and Jamboree. Catty corner from the project are existing high-rise residential towers that exist. And the transition on Jamboree coming across Campus is actually the transition into Newport from Irvine. So the intent on this project is really bring this new vision and this more aesthetically pleasing gateway into Newport from Irvine instead of the current condition that exists now. If you drive past there, you've probably seen it used to be the Far East Bank Building. And, you know, over the years, it's, you know, not in great condition. You know, the city really needs a better image of what it represents as it's coming, as you're coming into the city from Jamboree. So all the buildings are situated on the corner with the parking located back behind the building, so the main focus really from the corners, you can see now on the board, is just this building that's much cleaner, fresher, more modern, much more efficient, and just better for everyone. And I believe most of the increase in square footage is a very small increase in the density of the project to make it more viable and more fitting for the environment that it's in.
Very good, thank you. Let's bring it back, are there questions from the Council? Mr. Rozansky?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to that issue of the development agreement, and I'm going to make an alternative motion than the recommendation of staff. You know, Ed and I, we sit on multiple development agreement committees. We've already negotiated two for the city with Hoag Hospital and the Irvine Company. And if I was going to make an argument for who has provided a benefit to the city, aside from what they paid, or are going to pay to the city under their development agreements, I mean, Hoag Hospital, obviously, that goes without saying, the benefit they provide to the city. Irvine Company is also going to build significant buildings in Fashion Island and apartments, which would contribute to, maybe not revitalization of Fashion Island, I don't think they need that certainly, but certainly the property tax revenue and other revenues that were accrued to the city will be a benefit to the city. Yet we had exactions from them for their projects, because they were either, actually in the case of Hoag, they weren't even increasing the square footage, they were just moving square footage from the upper, or lower campus to the upper campus. And, you know, we sit on two other development agreement committees with the Newport Beach Country Club and the tennis club people, who also would claim that they're bringing benefits. The Country Club sponsors of the Toshiba, donates a lot of money to various charities like Hoag and others around town. The tennis club property wants to redevelop into some hotel units, which are going to throw off a lot of TOT tax to the city. So I can make the same argument for every development agreement we've negotiated. And I, quite honestly, I couldn't sit in front of those people and vote for this thing without at least having a discussion with the developer about a development agreement. So I would make a motion here that we continue this item for some further discussions with the applicant.
I'd like to respond to that. I believe that staff...
Sir, a second to Mr. Rozansky's.
I'll second.
I believe that staff has made a recommendation and can make technical findings. This project is of a vastly different scale than what Irvine Company and Hoag were proposing. And following the technical findings, it becomes a matter of policy. And I don't happen to believe that government ought to be squeezing every dollar out of businesses and out of applicants. So we have a philosophical policy difference. So I will not be supporting a continuance, I will be supporting the staff's recommendation. And I think that this is an economic revitalization of this area, and it's something for our gateway.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Selich.
I got a question for the city attorney. Could we approve this and withhold the second reading subject to negotiating a development agreement?
You could, yes.
What would you think about that, Councilman Rozansky?
Well, I'm not against the project, and I believe in redevelopment, and I have no problem with the project, or the property redeveloping. I guess I would, where does that put us then, as far as our next reading? As far, you know, where we're going to just approve it now, subject to...
Withhold the second reading till we have, come back with the development agreement.
We don't have to do second reading with any particular length of time, it's generally done at the next...
So if we do, if we do enter into a development agreement, though, with the applicant, are we back to the first reading again?
We are.
So then, I would say...
Right, it has to go back to Planning Commission, it changes the project.
Doesn't do us any good, then.
Yeah.
I don't think it does us any good.
Mr. Webb? Yeah, yeah, I'm, it's been a little while since I've read the staff report. What exactly is it that triggers the requirement for a development agreement in this particular project?
Those are provisions of the municipal code, chapter 1545. Basically, any new non-residential development within the airport area requires a development agreement. It's that simple.
I see. It's just that it's located in the airport area, because project really isn't a very big project, and for the unfortunate fact that it's in the airport area, it requires a development agreement.
And that may be why the Council also put in those provisions to waive it if they felt it was a minor project and it really wasn't.
Because we do projects like this, you know, all over the place without development agreements, right? I mean, it's not unusual, at least, that we would do a project of this size and not have a development agreement.
Well, we've done general plan amendments of this size without development agreements, and we do projects that are consistent with the general plan that don't require amendments to the general plan without development agreements. Yes.
I think that typically, though, the, I don't know, what I've considered, the minor general plan amendments are the ones that are like 3,000 square feet, somewhere of that nature, that are really minor, where they're adding lobbying, lobby space to a building or something like that. I did not catch the 11,000 square feet in the first reading of the staff report, so like Councilman Rozansky, I do have some concerns on this.
Councilmember DeGel, this is your district.
Well, based on the scale and the staff's recommendation, how they evaluate waivers, I would make a motion to support the project as recommended by staff.
Second.
I believe we have a pending motion already.
Well, we have a, I think, Councilmember DeGel offers a substitute motion. The substitute motion will be to approve the staff recommendation, which is basically to move the item without requiring a development agreement. While I generally think development agreements serve a very useful purpose, I think the interests of economic revitalization of this part of the city and the size of the project mitigate against requiring one here, so I'll be supporting the substitute motion. I also share Councilmember DeGel's, some of Councilmember DeGel's concerns about fee extraction. So if there's no further discussion, Mr. Rozansky?
Yeah, no one said there's going to be an extraction. I didn't say that there's going, that we're going to ask them for money, maybe they're providing benefit that they can prove to us is benefit sufficient enough to enter into development agreement. Every development agreement doesn't require an extraction, so I don't want anybody to think that I'm trying to squeeze a few dollars out of these people. I mean, it may come to that, I don't know, but I'm not saying it will, I'm not saying it won't, but that's not a mandatory requirement of a development agreement. And any development agreement would have to come back to the city for approval.
Well, there's no committee assigned to this project. I mean, you seem to be appointing yourself.
I didn't appoint anybody, I'm just objecting to the waiver.
All right.
I didn't realize that there was going to be a waiver. Certainly staff didn't bring it to our attention months ago when they were discussing this with the developer, so, you know, my bad for talking about it tonight instead of yesterday with Mr. Kiff.
Let's, if I can, let's vote on the substitute and see if we have a consensus. If not, then we'll move on to the original motion. Everybody understand what's going on? Please vote.
With Councilmembers Selich, Rozansky, Webb, and Gardner voting no, the motion fails.
All right, then the motion on the table is, do you want to restate your motion, please, Mr. Rozansky?
I just moved to continue the item for further discussions with the developer.
To a date certain, November 9?
That would be a little soon to bring back a development agreement.
Yeah, November 23rd.
All right, motion is...
Well, I'd like to clarify these discussions again, it's, there's no direction from the Council as to who negotiates these on this project. So I'm a little bit unclear as to, you know, you seem to have an assumption that it's you.
I have made no such assumption. If you want to be on the committee, be my guest, or whoever the Council decides to appoint, but I don't think we can appoint a committee tonight because it's not an agendized item. I'm like...
So I guess just to clarify, Steve, you say to have further discussions with the applicant. Are you suggesting further discussions by councilmembers with the applicant?
Oh, I think, well, with staff, or staff's going to have to discuss it with, I don't know. All I know is I'm not going to vote to approve this tonight.
Mr. Hunt, could you offer us some...
Can I finish, please? I'm not going to vote to approve this tonight. If they want to be turned down and rejected tonight, I'll make that motion. I was trying to accommodate Councilwoman DeGel's desire to move this project forward without starting all over again, and so if you're willing to continue it, I'm willing to make that motion. If that's not a satisfactory motion, then I'll change my motion to deny the applicant, and we'll start all over again. I mean, it's as simple as that.
So you're going to deny an economic revitalization project?
I'm going to deny this because I don't believe we should be entering into this waiver of the development agreement without some further discussion, further thought, because it's bigger than just this project. There's other developers in town, other property owners in town that are doing, or projects that may not be any larger than this, that will be entering into development agreements, because they are in areas, and it's not just the airport area, it's Fashion Island, and where else? There's another, oh, Banning Ranch, property that also have to enter into development agreement. So it's a bigger issue here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
I'm a little bit confused about what your thought or motion was on this. Are you saying that we definitely are going to come back with a development agreement, or are we going to have staff discuss and present to us the pros and cons of a development agreement and make another try at determining whether or not we're going to require a development agreement?
I guess I feel that there needs to be a development agreement. What that is, what it requires, whether it requires an exaction or not, I'd like to see a development agreement in place that spells out in a development agreement what the particular benefits are to the city for this project.
So if you are asking for us to continue this, what is, what is the goal that you're asking the staff to do at the end of the continuance? What will be brought back to us, is I guess what I'm...
I don't know, I guess I feel staff should reconsider their waiver of the development agreement.
Mr. Hunt, do you have some words to offer to help us in this dilemma?
I can address the question about direction regarding the development agreement. I do believe direction can be given in the context of this noticed agenda item, and I think the development agreement issued was clearly before the Council. If it were the Council's choice to continue the matter and direct that a subcommittee of Council, whether it's currently sitting development agreement or not, meet with the applicant to discuss it and come back with a recommendation whether or not we should enter into a development, because that's really the first step that I'm hearing Councilmember Rozansky say. And then we can bring it back to a date certain, say on the 23rd. It may be that he recommends a development agreement after the meeting, or it may not be, but then if it gets, a development agreement is the desire of the Council, it will have to come off at the agenda, we will have to take it to the Planning Commission and once it's actually changed. But that's an interim step that can address the underlying issue.
Well, the subcommittees are convened for specific projects, they're not, they're not, it's not some sort of a standing-brown-out committee.
Does, maybe I'm wrong, is it required that a council or even a committee be established?
I was just going to suggest... I was just going to suggest that, maybe you, floating a trial balloon here, you might want to ask the staff to come back with potentially the terms of a development agreement.
Exactly, and that's exactly what I'm asking.
We're capable of doing that.
I don't think it's necessary to have a council-level committee to enter into a development agreement with these folks, but I do believe a development agreement is necessary. Thank you.
So would somebody restate the motion that's on the floor?
I think, I think, no, no, we voted against the other motion. So the motion, I think, by Mr. Rozansky, correct me if I'm wrong...
My motion was to continue the item till November 23rd.
And to direct staff to come back with a development agreement?
A recommendation as to a development agreement. Either come back with a development agreement or a recommendation, I'll leave it at either board.
All right. And again, for the record, I think that's unnecessary, but it appears to be necessary to move this item forward for the applicant.
I just have one other question. Is Halloween coming sometime soon?
Or a full moon?
We just had the full moon. All right. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
There you go. Okay, public comments. Madam City Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Now, how many of you all are here on the Lido-Morning Side issue? Ah, we figured so. Here's what I'd like to do, ladies and gentlemen, in consideration of you all's time. We have been working on this issue over the weekend, Mr. Hunt and Mr. Kiff, and certainly Mayor Pro Tim Hen have been involved in trying to address the issues. We've received your emails, we've heard your concerns. What I would like to do is ask Mr. Hunt and Mr. Kiff to make some opening comments, to tell you where we are with matters, so everybody sort of gets the same base knowledge of where we are, and then open up the hearing for...
For the public comments.
Public comments. So, and it'll be limited to three minutes, given the size of the audience that we have today. So, and I wanted to state in advance, because I have to catch the red eye tonight, I'm going to get up and leave at about 10 minutes to 8:00, but it's not because I don't want to hear what you have to say. Tim, it's 9:00, rather. And we appreciate knowing what you have to say. So with that, Dave or Dave, who's going to start? Dave, Kiff?
I will, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers, thank you. As the Council knows, and many folks in the audience knows, the attempt to balance the rights of people in recovery versus the quiet, rights of individuals to the quiet enjoyment of their home and their neighborhood has been very challenging for the city. Last week, I joined about 100 Lido Isle residents, most of the folks in the room, and Candace Bruce from Morningside at an impromptu, actually very impromptu, meeting about 533 via Lido Sud. We... Sued. I'm not very eloquent at impromptu meetings sometimes, and I'm afraid I left the people with the impression that their city manager, who works for them and whose taxes support my salary, had given up and made a judgment call, especially as controversial as this one. It's bothered me all weekend. I didn't intend to leave that impression, and I apologize. I'm not a person who enjoys the nuances of strategy so much, I tend to jump right to outcomes. So I discussed with the group, your group candidly, the limitations of our remedies and whether it was meaningful to go down one path or another. I've overseen code enforcement here for about five years, and I'm clearly a bit jaded about the amount of time things take, especially to give folks the due process that our code enforcement process involves. And I made a mistake in not asking David to head out the door with me to that meeting. I know he would have done that. At the meeting, I did promise to talk with David, the city attorney, about our remedies. We've done so. And let me, just in a moment, allow David to offer some comments, but first I want to reiterate something, something that is no one's fault in this room. We are a civil community, a very civil community, in a very challenging spot. The residents on Lido Isle have every right to expect that they can live in a community consistent with their zoning, to know their neighbors, to know that their neighbors will share the same love and appreciation of Lido that they do. On the other hand, we're also a people and a city that respects state and federal law. The law is very clearly spoken here. There is a residential treatment model out there that people in recovery are entitled to the housing of their choice, and it's something that very much looks like a business can operate in a single-family neighborhood. But please forgive my ineloquence from Thursday, I do intend to enforce our laws. So with that, I'll ask David to comment on our remedies.
Thank you. And let me start out, too, by saying that we here are concerned, all of us, including those folks involved in code enforcement, with what's going on for Lido, and we, we've heard everything that's happened and looked hard at the issues and the opportunities for addressing those concerns. As the city manager has indicated, obviously, the city's in a very difficult position and sort of wedged between very real concerns on the part of its citizenry, as well as the law and the rights of the disabled. What we've tried to do in, in everything that we've done is, is to create the appropriate, fashion the appropriate relief for everyone and balance all of the different issues involved, one of which is, by the way, I've got copies of all this decision that we're happy to have received from the federal court today, is to litigate very significant issues in the federal and state courts, and even before HUD and the Department of Justice of the United States. So the city's been committed to pursuing the rights of its citizenry while balancing the interests of the disabled. We've looked very hard at the issues and what our options are regarding the actions that are before us tonight, that people are here to talk about. We unfortunately have very limited legal actions currently available to us with respect to Morningside's decision to open a second facility there. First, we've seen a number of emails, and people have talked about a violation of the zoning agreement that is technically not, quote, "effective," close quote, yet. There is no violation of the terms of that agreement. Had that agreement been fully effective at the time that this decision was made, the decision by Morningside to place that facility there would have been consistent with the terms of the agreement, so we do not have a violation of the zoning agreement. Secondly, there was another question that was asked, you know, can we trust the city and Morningside to enforce the zoning agreement when it's in effect? I can only answer for the city, but I can give impressions on Morningside. From the city's standpoint, we take enforcement of the zoning agreement very seriously. You will see, if you come to the next meeting, a review of the Sober Living by the Sea zoning agreement that has been extensive. We've done a lot of work with Sober Living by the Sea to bring them more into a better position for compliance, as well as to report to the citizenry of their compliance and lack thereof with respect to their zoning agreement. We intend to put, apply the same rigorous standards to the Morningside settlement, settlement agreement or zoning agreement. We have three to four members of our city staff dedicated to doing this, doing this type of work as a top priority. Matt Cozy Lyon of the Code Enforcement, Janet Brown in Planning, Kathy Walcott of my office, and myself. I oversee it directly with respect to it. We take this very seriously. Your complaints are heard, and we do take action. Now, with respect to issues related to Morningside's, from what we've seen so far, is that this decision was originally vetted to the city, and frankly, the timing of it surprised us all. However, working with Morningside on a number of different issues, we've seen them to be cooperative in other areas, so Morningside can address its intentions with respect to the agreement. I will say that our conversations with the attorneys from Morningside since this time is that we've received an oral commitment to comply with all of the operational guidelines of the zoning agreement, even though it's not technically effective. It will be technically effective on December 28th. In that case, we're going to move forward with respect to formalizing the understanding that they will completely comply, and we will be able to apply appropriate remedies under those circumstances. Now, lastly, what enforcement remedies do we have, even due to this, what I will call sort of the limbo nature of where this zoning agreement is? We still have our police powers. We have the police powers to enforce all the regulations of the city, with one exception. Under the zoning agreement, ordinance number 2008-5, which is commonly known as the Group Homes Ordinance, is accepted from our ability to enforce pending this limbo period. That's part of the Sober Living by the Sea agreement, as well as it is for Morningside's agreement, and the purpose is, is that we could take away the value of the agreement if we attempted to enforce it, and that would be a violation of the covenant of good faith and fair dealing, that the courts would deal rather seriously with the city for, if we did it. As much as I would like to find effective remedies, other than what I have just outlined for you, I have to say that I do not see an effective remedy that the court would apply without chastising the city for its actions if we tried to take action under the zoning agreement at this time. So it is our intention to finalize the agreement with Morningside vis-a-vis the operating parameters. It's our intention to continue to push for an appropriate solution to this balance of it, and then we will enforce it using our code enforcement powers, as well as other further agreements that we can reach with Morningside.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt, and I now invite members of the audience who'd like to speak on this matter, please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Longyear. Three minutes, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Willis Longyear from Lido Isle. I request the following comments be entered in the record for this evening. On October 21, Lido residents were invited to an open house at 533 Via Lido Sued to learn about a drug recovery facility that Morningside Recovery was setting up at that address. Over 100 people showed up in the street, and it was moved down to the clubhouse to clear the traffic for this impromptu meeting with city manager David Kiff and Morningside Chief Executive Officer Candace Bruce. I think they were as surprised as we were. In conversations which followed, David Kiff said that Morningside was operating under a zoning agreement, which was signed by the city on September 28. But the zoning agreement states that it does not go into effect until 91 days later on December 28. So there is no such agreement in effect until December 28. Asked why Morningside was being allowed to take possession before that date, Mr. Kiff said something to the effect that he allowed it to do so as a matter of convenience, and that I made, well, that's what I understood. When asked if the presence of a drug recovery facility in Lido's closely spaced residential community could impact the values of nearby properties, he agreed that it very likely could do so. It's a no-brainer. In the meantime, it has come to light that Morningside is taking occupancy of the property on a lease which appears to be improperly executed and may prove to be invalid. With all of these things in mind, we very strongly request the city to require that Morningside cease all operation and quit the property at least until December 28, but also until the validity of its lease with the property owner is legally established. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longyear.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
We understand everybody's perspective, so if you'd please just refrain from applauding, that'd be helpful for the time. We understand you all agree. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I think you can see where we come from here.
Exactly.
My name is Bettina Dinegar. I live in Newport Beach. I wish these remarks to be put in the public record. We are here tonight with regard to your ordinance agreement with Morningside Recovery and the Waterford property. This property is now held in trust by the heirs of Marion and Hugh Kreip, and we understand the lease, it was leased to Morningside Recovery without all the heirs' approval. But that's a matter between them. It has nothing to do with you, per se. But in any event, the city manager, Dave Kiff, by his own admission, chose not to follow the ordinance the city council passed on on September 28th of this year. You know, the one that says facilities, meaning drug houses, must wait 90 days. This is what we understand. I'm really surprised that Mr. Hunt tells us that that doesn't apply somehow. Maybe we read things wrong. But in any event, Mr. Kiff also admitted just last Thursday in front of the large group that he did not follow the ordinance because it was time-consuming, and he felt that Morningside Recovery was going to move in anyway. Well, shame on you, Mr. Kiff. You really, that, you work for us, and thank you for your mea culpa, but that didn't help. This is not the first time that Morningside Recovery has disregarded the city's policies. I don't feel that they are good business models here in this city at all. Would it be possible to suggest that if the council is going to pass ordinances, they at least follow them and insist that their employees abide by them and enforce them? We are asking the council tonight to instruct Mr. Kiff and Mr. Hunt to advise Morningside Recovery to cease and desist from occupying the house at Via Lido Sued per the agreement, and this should give us time to maybe sort out the eventual thing, maybe the lease is not valid. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Lori Morris, again. West Newport. I'm here to support Lido Island. I just want to clarify that the, apparently, this particular house is going to be maintained as a six-and-under facility, and that they can be anywhere in the city, obviously, that's been established, but that they are supposed to be independent of any type of treatment. They're not to be in treatment. They're not to be picked up by vans, they're not to be given treatment, and they are going to be by Morningside Recovery. They're going to be a satellite of that facility. So I don't think that they actually are under the rules or regulations of ADP to be a six-and-under facility, that they're, that, that is another problem that needs to be addressed, along with what Willis and Bettina has brought forward. But apparently, this meeting did go. Candace Bruce did not get the welcome she thought she was going to with open arms, and there were a lot of upset residents who were there. My problem is that Mr. Kiff came to the aid of Candace Bruce and Morningside Recovery. I have not, in my experience, known that anybody in the city runs to a Realtor's office or an attorney's office or any type of business to say, hey, I'm here to answer on their behalf. So that tells me that this city is in league with Morningside Recovery as it is with Sober Living by the Sea. I know this, this is true for me, because if anybody should go up against Morningside or Sober Living by the Sea, the city will join together with them to fight their own residents in court. I find that terribly disturbing. And if I'm wrong about that, is it being written in the ordinance? That's the way I read it in the ordinance, that's the way I read it in Sober Living's ordinance, and that bothers me a lot. Technically, now that we are in business with Morningside Recovery and Sober Living by the Sea, if one of their clients should happen to, and it's been in court, already established that they are not held responsible for their clients if they should stab, kill, attack residents that surround their facilities, it has been established by the courts that they are not held, the facility itself, Morningside Sober Living by the Sea will not be held responsible. So who will be held responsible? The city of Newport Beach. As the taxpayer, are we going to pay for these lawsuits that are going to come from families, from residents, from businesses that are around, that if one of these clients, God forbid that be the case, but I myself have been witness to clients running, screaming, naked down the street, tearing their clothes off, Morningside's facility especially. They, a particular woman barricading herself in a home after going through and trying to get into three different other homes, breaking into three different homes and then barricading herself. God forbid she had found a gun and killed herself, the resident, or anybody, neighbor, a police officer that was responding, but yet what happened? They took her out of the house and took her back to her respective facility, let her go, and told the resident, don't file charges, it will affect her recovery. She went off her meds. So this is the way we're dealing with this. But as a city, are we going to be held responsible? And I'd like to add, no, on measure V. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. Edward Cook, 527 Via Lido Sued, three doors down from the house in question. New homeowner, self-made businessman, and life savings poured into a lot that we're going to build. I am the one who discovered the fundamental flaw in the lease. My builder happens to be the cousin of the heirs to the uncle who died recently and who left the home to his three children. He told me he couldn't possibly believe that his family would do that, notwithstanding anything to do with discrimination or otherwise. You should know that that home had been argued by several family members that it needed to be sold. That is the issue at hand. I'm in the real estate business. I personally signed and negotiated over a billion dollars worth of commercial leases. I'm now sitting here feeling like I have donkeys strapped on my head. I do due diligence on everything that I do, and I moved into a community. I have four children under the age of 12. I called my wife tonight, who was very wanting to join me. She was in broad tears because she couldn't even take her two-year-old to see our new home, our lot, on this water. So if you think this isn't a personal issue, I know you've lived with this, let me tell you, this thing is rising up to a level of civil disobedience. If you need any example of this, take your governor in Arizona. This is where America's got to go. This city can be an example. I am, as we speak, putting together a coalition of very high-end politicians and others, including other mayors of other cities that are girding themselves against this invasion, but that is a bigger story, and that's for another day. I am telling you today, putting you all on notice, as I did the CEO, she is charged with the knowledge that that lease may in fact be invalid, and yet she still moved forward. If I was a businessperson and I signed a lease for a facility, and I, and I was told in front of a public audience that there might be a challenge to that, I might be wrong, but I am put on notice, and she was put on notice before they moved in, there have since been at least five violations by that same group that we're saying is an honorable group. They are not honorable. The people that are housed in these homes are not honorable people. And yes, they are currently protected under law, but let me tell you, when I'm paying $45,000 in taxes for the privilege to pay more when we build our home, this will not stand, and we need every one of you to look at your position and say to yourselves, is there anything more important than the peaceful enjoyment of our homes and the protection of my right as a homeowner to have my children unmolested, whether by a smoking person on the street, which they're not supposed to do, they've already been doing that all week, parking cars in front of garages, and everything else? So I'm here to tell you, I'm putting you all on notice as well, public notice, in the record, this lease, by my facts, and I have been in contact with this family consistently, is invalid on its face, and I hope the city will support us in every way possible to make this thing go away onwards to the bigger battle.
Thank you, sir. Next. Mr. Billings.
Tom Billings, Newport Beach, Mayor Curry and members of the council. You know, when I first walked in today, I heard the opening prayer, and one of the things he mentioned was, we're especially grateful for the special qualities and values of our special city of Newport Beach. Tonight, I'd like to speak to that. We've heard other speakers address the legal technical issues involved, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak to that then. I'm here to protest the rehab business as well, established, that's trying to establish at 533 Via Lido Sued. And I'm here to testify for the moral and ethical issues surrounding this issue. And I grew up in Newport. I spent much of my childhood living on Lido, and I enjoyed living there, again, for the past 10 years. As we all know, but I'll remind you, Lido is unique. It is a 100% residential, family-oriented community, and has been special because of this. It has great kid programs, both young kids and adult kids, throughout the year. And being on an island, it is also a dense residential community, meaning the homes are close together, it's an island, we're close, we're tight-knit. As a result of that, having a business, well, first of all, since 1900, there's never been a business mixed in with the residential, residential homes on Lido, especially a drug hub business. So, so basically, it's, 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 it's wrong. It's ethically and morally wrong to have such a business. Now, you have your, your state, federal laws, fine, but you need to man up and fight, as it's been said, for your citizens, for us. It's inappropriate to have a use of a business making, with one motivation, to make a lot of money in a dense residential neighborhood like Lido. Are drug rehab facilities needed? Absolutely. But in the appropriate area... But in the appropriate area, appropriate location, and not on Lido for the reasons I've stated. So you, again, as members of our city council and city staff, are stewards of the high quality of life that has been the trademark of Newport Beach over the past century. You are our eyes and ears. A lot of people are busy, you know, they don't come to the meetings. They rely on you guys. You represent us to ensure the quality and character, that the quality and character of Newport Beach is maintained, as example, in places like Lido. So we hold you responsible, especially Councilmember Hen, who represents our district, City Manager Kiff, to do your job and fight for us. You know, I know you're dealing with the legal, you're getting advice from a city attorney, your preceded attorney, Hunt, by a man by the name of Bob Burnham, who's, who got us into this mess. And, and now, you know, stand up and, and, and so what if you have to go to court? You have to fight some legal battles. Do it for us, because if you don't, we will.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. Next speaker, please.
Cynthia Kohler, West Newport. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I'm here to support the residents of Lido. You guys have heard my stories, and I've been intimidated terribly by Morningside. You know the background of what Morningside has done to me personally, because I have spoke, spoke up. What these people need to understand is, is this, this home that's going in at 533 is not following ADP guidelines. They're getting treatment there. I've watched the vans pick them up. They are not supposed to have any relationship. They're getting treatment, not following the guidelines. The only licensed facility is on my street. The same street, you all, that Mr. Kiff and, and Mr. Hen were at my house on the 4th of July, and we caught Morningside having a big, huge party, drinking party, at the facility, their only licensed facility. These are not good neighbors. Now, I know that you have to follow the laws. I understand that. I know that you're doing this, this development agreement, because you want to avoid a lawsuit. But in lieu of what happened today, and the ruling that happened today, for God's sakes, it took us to raise $400,000 to, to force you guys to work with us, to try to take back our neighborhood in West Newport, to write an ordinance. Why aren't we enforcing and using our ordinance? Can you explain that to us? I would like to know.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing no further speak? Oh, there we go.
Denise Oberman, Mayor, Councilmembers. This business of going back to the back end, we assure the residents of this community we are going to enforce. There are residents, is, this is putting the burden of reporting nuisances that go on every day of every month of every year, on individual facility, and cumulative effect of the multiple facilities that are all over the peninsula and Lido-West Newport Zone, into the citizens' hands. So what is our quality of life, and what are our rights? And what has happened over the last, and I am not exaggerating, the case of Narcanon, 10 years, in the case of myself, with multiple facilities behind me, six and a half years of making complaints about legal nuisances, disturbances, having to breathe smoke, having to have my property vandalized? The police won't enforce the ordinances. Code enforcement answers the phone very nicely, but there's always a reason why we can't enforce the ordinances. It's the privacy of individuals? This isn't about HIPAA or privacy. We talk to people in the DA's office. It's about management of land uses that need to be, these uses need to be regulated. It has to do with public safety. It has to do with residential neighborhood integrity. It's within our legal rights as a city to regulate these land uses, to make sure they are in compatible places. The city has told us now, since the ordinance was enacted, we cannot enact the integral facilities provision of this ordinance, because we feel that we are at risk legally, because there was some question, actually, a prior ruling now vacated, that a federal judge made based on inaccurate representations by the largest operator in this town, Sober Living by the Sea. So now, and congratulations on a job well done, and we're all very happy, that the city entity has prevailed, and that the judge did support the ordinance, we need to enforce this integral facilities provision. We need to do it with facts. We need to do it with sound planning principles, and we need to assert it as a city, because if we don't, we're going to have exactly the phenomenon that we've got. The development agreements, as we've mentioned repeatedly, are fraught with loopholes, and Morningside just demonstrated in spades, a key loophole. So, they've made a move. They made a move without notice, although we have evidence that the city did know about it. So within days of when this, they met with residents and said they had no plans to locate any other facilities on Lido. They were already in the process of looking and negotiating a lease, and then they moved in. City staff knew they were at this facility, and we found out from members of the planning staff, they moved. Morningside is opening more facilities in Lido Village. Well, what are we going to do about revitalization of Lido Village? We've got a rehab community. I know my time is up. I know everybody's heard what I have to say, and I'm not going to stop talking about it, because this is not a good solution, and we need to resolve the problem. Take $2 or $3 million off that Civic Center budget and allocate it to a legal defense and assert our rights.
Thank you for your comments, Denise.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Paul Weinberg. I'm a Lido resident. I only have two or three points that I want to make, because I don't want to repeat what everybody else has said. We live on an island, and we are three feet apart in our setbacks from our neighbors. These homes are 24 and sometimes even taller feet high. We don't have the luxury of simply turning our backs, turning our shoulders, closing the door, or closing the blinds, and avoiding the very real impact that these facilities are having on us. We are defenseless. We can't build a wall. We can't build a gate, and we can't do anything to get away from what these people are doing. We've got to confront it. We don't have any options. This is such an incompatible use, what these people are doing in this neighborhood, where you have only one inlet and one outlet on Lido. There is no other way to get on and off that island except through the front. We are stuck with these people. This is clearly, as the gentleman before me said, solely a residential community, and a quiet one at that. Such an incompatible use. How this got to this point, where a use of this type went not just at the entrance to Lido, the Antiques, which I understand, I don't agree with, but I understand, but you put it in the heart. You put it right smack in the middle of Lido, so it affects the most massive number of people. This is wrong. This is not what zoning law should do. This is not what a governmental entity should support. And while I understand that the city needs to be fair, I have experienced two occasions where the city has favored Morningside. One is, I was in that meeting personally, when Morningside assured us they had no plans to expand on Toledo, and yet within one week or so after that, they did. How did the city not know? And once the city knew, why didn't they tell us first? Why did the city not say, "Warning? We are aware that somebody's coming on Toledo. You need to know, and you need to be aware, and you need to take steps so that you can deal with it." But the city waited until after they were there, and then belatedly said, "Oh, well, okay, too bad." I don't think that's right. And it's hard, I think, when you're a resident, as opposed to being a dispassionate, objective observer, to keep your feelings out of it. But on the other hand, I think that's why I'm up here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Jack Thompson, and I live at 531 Vialito Sued. I'm the next-door neighbor. And I'd like to just tell you what it's like after about five days of living with these people. We have smokers all around, coming in the front, on the back decks, they're everywhere. They all smoke. The lights are on all night. It's like a commercial building. I took a law class one time, and they once told me, "If it walks like a duck, smells like a duck, and quacks like a duck, it's probably a business." The other issue I'd like to raise is the fact that this is not just going to impact the neighbors and the property values of their homes. It's going to impact property taxes, which is income to the city and the county, which should affect the people that run the city. They should be worried about that, because it will affect the entire Lido Island value. And that's going to impact your budgets, not just ours, yours. Thank you.
Michael Bransowatsky. I'm on the Windward side of our new neighbors. And I think Mr. Hunt alluded to something that we all hear about often, which is the rule of law. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the agreement that's been signed by Morningside and the city. I find that to be a very tough agreement. It's, was very disappointing, therefore, that Morningside chose to violate at least the spirit, if not the letter of the law, in that agreement, by moving in ahead of the 91-day time period, as they did. Maybe it's not a violation of the law, as Mr. Hunt said. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not here to say that, but I can clearly say that at least the spirit of the agreement, and what could have been a good relationship with the neighbors and the city, was violated by that early decision on Morningside's part. So, then I have to think about the rule of law as far as the patients are concerned, being in the healthcare field, and having issues in my family, like every family, with substance abuse. I certainly believe in the need for treatment programs, even residential ones. In fact, I've been proud of Lido for tolerating a facility on the tip of Lido. I've even told friends, we're a diverse community. We're not special. We're not, we have rehab homes. We have multifamily homes. We have rehab homes on Lido, and that's okay. You know, I feel good about that. I don't want to live behind a gated community. So let me speak to the rule of law as far as the patients are concerned, because I do think that Morningside, in this case, put their profits ahead of the interests of their patients. And the reason for that opinion is the following. Knowing what they know about HIPAA rules, that's Health Information Portability Act, it is clear that patient confidentiality is an issue. To put a treatment facility, even if it's not a true treatment facility, if it's a residential facility, with recovering patients, where every word can be heard by their next-door neighbors, as we do, when they're outside, puts them in a situation where their patient protection rights are diminished. Why would they do that? Why would they put them in a house so close? This is one of the most densely populated areas I've ever lived in. I tolerate that, because our neighbors have been reasonable, and these neighbors may be reasonable, but on the other hand, their values and their rights may be being violated as we speak by the proximity in which the operator has placed them. Secondly, knowing the terms of the agreement signed with the city, why would the operator place their clients or patients? That's clearly going to violate the very aspects of this agreement. It is impossible for them not to smoke and not have violated the agreement as it reads right now. We are downwind from them. The prevailing wind is offshore. Every time someone lights a cigarette on a dock, and I can understand them wanting to enjoy the nice sunsets and the beauty of Lido, but they also have a behavioral need to smoke. I understand that. In our treatment facility at Hoag, our patients smoke as well. That smoke cannot help but get into our house, as it has done at least five times, twice today, and in fact, the tourist cruise boat was going by as these folks were smoking and enjoying their afternoon. It won't be long before even the tourists will be violating their privacy, because I know how the tour boat operators like to embellish their tours, and they will now point out the celebrity rehab house on Lido, and people will be taking pictures. So, you know, I think the operator should really think about what they did here. Yes, they can have better marketing, because they have a beautiful facility.
Dr. Zawatsky, your time is up.
And they can charge, like they did in violating this lease, over $150,000 during the, at least the spirit violation of this. They can charge much higher prices for having these people in this house, yet the very people they're trying to treat are being harmed by this operator. Thank you.
Well, my mantra is, "If you're not on the edge, you're taking up too much space." And I'm going over the edge tonight. I'm concerned about the city of Newport, although I've lived on Lido for 50 years. We talk about the beauty of Newport and how wonderful it is, and I talk to people on the peninsula who are surrounded by drug houses, who tell me they come at 10 o'clock to see that everyone's in, and at 10:30, the cabs come and take them to the bar. I've had, well, these are true stories, and I don't want to name names. I have heard of people who live on the peninsula who say they steal. They have stole their bicycles.
Ma'am, may we have your name, please?
I'm sorry. I'm Dr. Judy B. Rosner, and I wish you had said you were a physician, so at least they know. I've been studying public policy for 50 years, 30 years. Anyway, my point is this. This is the city of Newport. I've looked at the map where all these drug houses are. Are we proud of this? So here's why I'm going off the edge. I have heard, I can't prove it, that there is a connection between some of the people in Morningside and members of our city, hall, council, staff, whatever. And all I can say is, from the behavior that I've seen, watching what's been going on, I really have to wonder, why is it? We have control as a city to determine what we do, and who we lease our houses to, and so forth. I don't, can't believe that Newport is proud to have, what is it, 100 do we have? How many drug rehab houses do we have now in the city of Newport? Well, why don't we have them in Newport Coast? Why don't we have them in Costa Mesa? Why don't we have them in Ventura? Why should they be in Newport Beach? And this is what's bothering.
John Rollis, Newport resident. I actually have a question. Candace sort of shined it off when we asked it at that meeting where we had 100 people. She indicated they have 12 beds at the beginning of the island, six at 355, which gives them 18, or 533. And they're entitled to 30. Are they going to put the balance of the 18 on Lido Isle? Because if I was in business, this kind of business, to me, I would want to be cost-effective. I could say, "Well, the van can pick up everybody going in the circle," or, "They can walk." So the question I'm asking tonight is, is the plan of Morningside to put 18 more on Lido Isle?
Sir, are those, are those, is that, is that your comment? Okay, thank you.
Good morning, members of the city council and members of the public. My name is Mary Helen Beata Ficato, and I'm one of the attorneys representing Morningside Recovery. And I've actually been representing Morningside Recovery for some time now. Just to kind of recap, because some of the comments that I've heard tonight leads me to believe that maybe the public has bits and pieces, but they're not understanding the big picture. And so, and so since I, I sat through and listened to all of your public comments, I think you owe me the same courtesy.
Ma'am, I think it would be best for you to address councilmen, not the audience.
We've been through years of litigation, both in the state court and the federal court. At some, at some point during that litigation, it was decided that the, it was in the best interest of both Morningside Recovery and the city of Newport Beach and its citizens, that we try to find some sort of resolution. And so we went through months of negotiations, and ultimately, we came up with this development agreement that went before the Planning Commission. They made certain recommendations, and after Morningside already had an agreement with the city of Newport Beach, based on the recommendations of the Planning Commission, we sat back down, and Morningside made further concessions, receiving no additional benefits, but it made further concessions in order to appease some of the concerns that the public had. After that, those modifications happened to the zoning agreement. We came for the first reading before the city council, and then ultimately, the second reading on September 28th. The zoning agreement was approved by the city council on September 28th. Now, I hear members of the public making comments about how the zoning agreement isn't in effect. Morningside Recovery, let me back up for a second. With the zoning agreement came certain operational conditions and benefits to both the city and the public. Some of those are that there was, that there were going to be certain routes that Morningside Recovery's vans were going to take place, and there's an exhibit that lays out those routes. There were going to be quiet hours during certain times. There was going to be parking. Unlike Sober Living by the Sea, one of the things that Morningside Recovery agreed to was that none of their residents, none of their residents who are living in these facilities have their own personal vehicles, so we don't have extra cars on the street. And probably the biggest concession that's in the zoning agreement is that even though under state and federal law- under state and federal law, Morningside Recovery would have been allowed to open an unlimited amount of ADP licensed, six and under, facilities within the city of Newport Beach. Yes, unlimited amount. Morningside agreed to give up that right and to put a cap on how many facilities, both licensed and unlicensed, that it would have here in the city of Newport Beach. And so that's something that was a benefit under the zoning agreement to the city and the public. So we have the zoning agreement, and Morningside has by all means complied with the terms of that zoning agreement, even though the technical effective date of the agreement isn't until December 28th.
Mary Helen, how much longer for your comments?
Not much. I want to address this loophole issue.
All right. For the benefit of the audience, we've heard many, many comments here from people that are having a problem with what's going on on Lido. I am going to grant Mary Helen a few extra minutes to respond.
With respect to the loophole, in the zoning agreement, it lays out that at the time that the zoning agreement was signed and negotiated with Morningside and the city, what the locations of its facilities were. And those addresses are laid out in the zoning agreement. It also says that knowing that those locations are not going to be set in stone, that Morningside, while staying in its bed cap limit, is going to be able to move its facilities from time to time, what certain conditions need to be met in order to open a new facility. So I've heard comments here tonight that say, well, Morningside has violated the zoning agreement. And like the city attorney said, even if the zoning agreement were technically in effect now, in effect when this new lease got entered into, Morningside Recovery has not violated. Both of those locations on Lido Isle meet all of the conditions in the zoning agreement. So there's nothing that they've done, there's no technical loophole that they're playing with in order to open this new facility. They meet the conditions laid out in the zoning agreement. I've also heard some comment that there's some connection between Morningside Recovery and members of the city council or the staff. And I just wanted to let members of the public know and other members of the city council that I've been representing Morningside Recovery. I'm very familiar with who the owners of Morningside Recovery are, who the key players are, you know, who makes these business decisions. And I can represent to you that there is absolutely no connection between members of the city council and Morningside Recovery, and that the city has no, you know, economic interest in what Morningside Recovery does with these facilities. With that, I have no further comments.
Excuse me, sir. We need to maintain decorum. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Julie Ackerman. I'm a 10-year resident of Lido Island. And I was not intending to speak, but I just want you to know, as you're up here chuckling about whether or not something is technically...
Ma'am, you should address the counsel.
...in the former speaker, excuse me, that they find something funny about how upset we are of having these businesses operate on our... within our residence. And that, yes, we're upset, and yes, there are many of us, because these are our hopes. This is not our business. This is not a choice that we got. We didn't get to negotiate this. We got it surprised on us. And I negotiate a business, I do M&amp;A for a living. So I understand what it's like to sit in a negotiation and to try to find a reasonable conclusion. But there's nothing funny about this when you're talking about hitting our homes and our neighborhoods. And if people think that they're abiding by an ordinance and not smoking, and that we've got to call the police because they're not abiding by it, it's not working. So if that's not working, we need to try something else. Because I'll tell you, when I walk around the island, they're all gathered and smoking, and they don't care about our rights when we actually paid for these homes and we have worked our lives to pay for these homes. And there is nothing funny about this of anything anyone is trying to do from stopping this violation of our rights of somebody who's decided to be able to make a profit and move their business onto our residential island. Thank you.
I'm Victoria Bransowatsky. I live at 535 via Lido Sood, and I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist. My concern actually is for the participants in this program. They're in the house right next to me. They have no confidentiality. I can see every person who comes in and out of that house. Ask, can anybody in Lido? If I open up a window, I look directly into the house. They look into my bathroom, my guest room, my upstairs bathroom, my living room, my dining room, my kitchen. There's absolutely no privacy for these people. My husband pointed out, we can overhear their conversations. And I have called and reported that there's a lack of confidentiality, which I don't think is fair for the participants. I think that Morningside put them in a terrible position. Also, the lawyer talked about items that they agreed to. The smoking, as my husband said. The letter of the agreement they have is, no secondary smoke shall go on an adjacent parcel. Every time I smell smoke, I call and report it. It also talks about a quiet time. These people have to be quiet, according to the agreement that Morningside signed, from 9:00 p.m. until 8:00 a.m. And it says, no noise, no voices, no music. I've lived on Lido for almost 12 years. I can hear the neighbors cough. I know when the baby cries. I know when they're arguing. The letter of the agreement means that the participants cannot make a sound after 9:00 at night. 9:45 last night, they were sitting out on the dock, smoking cigarettes and carrying on a conversation. That's a violation of two things that they agreed to. I called in, actually, I reported it to Mr. Niff's accountant, because I was given the wrong number. But I think we've finally gotten through to Matt. But I've been keeping a log. And again, I'm just looking at the rules that Morningside agreed to in writing with the city. And what I'd like the city to do is enforce them. I feel like a bitch because I'm constantly calling and saying, hi, it's Victoria Bransowatsky. Again, they're violating number seven. They're violating number eight. I took my dog for a walk this morning and came back, a delivery truck is parked behind my driveway. When they were moving in, remodeling every single day, and I didn't keep a log then, which is unfortunate, but I did call the real estate agent, because he asked me to. Every single time, there was a truck there, and every day, there was one or more trucks. And they would always politely come out and move them. But I had to leave my house, go into the house, confront people, and say, could you please move the truck? Could you please move the truck? And I've been told that's against an agreement that they've signed. I report it, and nothing happens. It continues. I have good friends now with Kyle, who is the on-call person. Yesterday, he responded to me individually. Last time I called, I was told I would get a call in the morning. He guaranteed me he would go to the house and see that they not smoke outside, because according to the agreement, they will not be able to smoke anywhere outside the house. And he asked me where I thought they should smoke. And I said, I don't believe this is my problem to solve. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Roger McGregor. I live at... I am the trustee for the home at 534 Sood, which is directly across the street from the house in question. I'm the trustee. It was my parents' home. My grandchildren, my daughter, my son-in-law live there now. And as you can imagine, we're a bit upset. I've lived on the island for around 60 years, and I don't think I have ever seen an issue unite that group of people like this one has. There are 2,000 people on that island, roughly. They are all speaking with absolutely one voice on this, and the city will hear it. The question I have for the city right now is, under current code, they are not authorized to be there. The agreement takes place three months from now. Why isn't the city, as of tomorrow morning, going there and tossing them out?
Are there any more speakers that have trouble with what's going on on Lido Isle? Anyone else? Okay. I asked if there were any more speakers. Are there any more speakers?
That's my dad. We live directly across the street from this house, and it's been an issue ever since the lease began with vans and that kind of thing. My big concern, the agreement may be a valid one, but I haven't seen any teeth in what the city can do up till now. The call number that we have to call when there are violations is Morningside. And what I want to know down the road is, what are the teeth? What can you actually do if they violate these? Are we going to just keep calling and everybody go, oh, that's bad? Or if somebody at some point actually has some monetary penalties? Or what actual penalties there are if there continue to be these kind of violations in our neighborhood?
Everybody had a chance to speak if it wants to? All right. Candace, I thought you had started to get up to say something. Did you want to say anything?
Candace Bruce. And I'd like to say that, you know, we certainly, I think there was some miscommunication in our moving in before the effective date of the agreement. It wasn't Morningside's intention to breach or break that agreement. I think we've shown good due diligence and are working with the city on our agreement. We've been very quick to respond to issues that are brought up by the community. We, you know, passed information off to the city that it was a residence that we were interested in. It was confirmed that it met the terms, and we acted on it. In hindsight, we certainly would do things differently. And at the same time, moving forward, we're completely willing to abide by the terms of our agreement, even though it isn't technically in effect. We do realize that we have the issue with the smoking. But before I address that, I want to address the clients and some of the issues that were brought up about the clients and the potential... or how they might feel about HIPAA. There's nothing that goes on in that house that necessarily needs to be HIPAA compliant. Clients choose to live there. The clients that are currently living there absolutely love that house. And...
Excuse me. Please. Please, may we have... We need decorum here, please.
They love that residence, and they could afford to live in that community. The clients that live there are attorneys, they're businessmen, and they...
We must have decorum here.
Their interest is to be good neighbors.
Sir, please be quiet. Please be quiet.
They're interested in being good neighbors. You know, they've gone out of their way to be friendly to people that they see that are outside the house when they're in the neighborhood. They... And, you know, I've had conversations with them about it. And it's their interest to do what they can to impress upon this community that their being there is not only safe, but that they can... They are active members of society. They are businessmen, they're attorneys, they're doctors. And as far as they're living in that house, they don't have a problem with you hearing them on the phone. I'll tell you, I have a problem with neighbors leaving alcohol on... right up to our fence line in order to tempt them. I have a problem with neighbors having video cameras pointed at them. I have a problem with neighbors in the streets snapping pictures like the paparazzi. You know, they're human beings. I understand that you're angry with us at Morningside. You might be angry at the city, but I would ask that it's not taken out on people that are trying to actively seek help for themselves. Because I thought it was a community that really...
This is... Excuse me. This is not a conversation between members of the audience and the person at the podium. We've had very good decorum. Everyone has had a chance to speak their mind with decorum here. We're going to maintain that. So please cooperate.
So in an effort to continue to try to build a relationship with the community, Morningside's very dedicated to respond to inquiries. Kyle's been very responsive with neighbors who have called. He calls me almost every time that he talks to somebody if it's something that he can't resolve. We're actively looking to make that a non-smoking house. It's something we're discussing with current clients that are there and anyone else that comes in, we would look to have a non-smoking client base there. We realize that the smoking in that particular house is going to be difficult for us. As far as future intentions, we don't have any future intentions to have any other houses on that. We're at our cap with this house as far as our city agreement. So going forward, you know, it would be very limiting for us to put another house there. Thank you.
Excuse me. While you're at the podium, Candace, I do have a question for you. You mentioned that you're willing to abide by the terms of the zoning agreement. Is this something you're willing to commit to in writing?
Well, you know, I mean, I would... Mary Helen can speak on that. I certainly am, you know, dedicated to doing that. I've been very responsive on, you know...
Yes or no?
I mean, I would take my legal counsel.
Yes or no? 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 Yes or no?
It's on page seven of the zoning agreement. It's Roman numeral K, Roman numeral 3, K subsection 3. And it states that essentially, there's a stay on the ability of the city to enforce the zoning agreement pending the effective date of the ultimate agreement. So we're expressly prevented from applying 2008-5 pursuant to the terms of our agreement.
Even though that agreement has not reached its effective date?
Yeah, even though the agreement's not reached its effective date. The purpose of that provision was expressly intended to address the limbo period, if I may, between the execution of the agreement and the effective date of the agreement. The purpose of the effective date is to allow for appropriate time periods to pass pursuant to the law, dealing with other timeframes applicable to it. The parties bargained for this issue, and frankly, the court would enforce it. So, we don't have an option under 2008-5 at this point to enforce that ordinance against Morningside.
Okay. There's been an allegation here that we knew in advance that Morningside was moving in on the date that they moved in.
David, Dave Kiff, you had the conversation with Morningside.
I did, Mr. Hen.
Did you know that they were intending to move in on the date they moved in?
No, I did know the homes that Morningside was considering, and just as Ms. Bruce reported, she consulted me with three different homes. And she asked me very specifically, would these homes be compliant with, specifically, we're looking at the block and the distancing requirements of the zoning code, and I answered yes. In hindsight, I should have added something to that saying that, at least my interpretation would have been that those shouldn't have been effective until December 28th. I didn't think to add that.
With regard to, there's been some conversation here regarding the lease and the validity of the lease. Mr. City Attorney, can you give us a view of whether or not the city of Newport Beach has any standing with regard to the validity of that lease?
The city of Newport Beach does not have any standing with respect to the lease. The lease is entered into between private parties. We don't have an ability specifically to affect that lease.
Does our ordinance 2008-5 entitle us to direct where any particular operator may or may not put their locations?
No, it does not. It sets forth parameters, if it were applicable to the situation, that a hearing officer would apply as to where they could be located in considering either reasonable accommodation or use permit. If it were applicable at this point in time to any new facility, it directs certain areas of the city, but it doesn't specifically direct exact locations.
So, our ordinance does not bar their, Morningside's ability to sign a lease on Lido Isle?
No, it does not. And more particularly, we would not be able to prevent them from placing any six and under licensed facility literally anywhere in the city but for the zoning agreement that was entered into and the cap that was accepted by Morningside.
Can I ask a question along those lines, too?
Certainly, go ahead.
I understand the sort of highly legalistic interpretations of things, but it would seem like the city representing our citizens, and I used to work in the planning staff, that although we couldn't say you can't go there, common sense would kind of say, you know, if you go there, you're going to encounter a lot of conflict, and it's probably going to get a lot of publicity. Maybe you want to consider something else. I mean, are we prevented from giving that sort of a common sense guidance?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, council member. Are you asking whether it makes sense to move in at this point in time, common sense?
Well, I'm sort of suggesting from the, if, you know, the company is obviously going to encounter a lot of conflict, it wouldn't seem like a very good citing decision to go here, even though they may have a legal right. And I'm just wondering, as they encounter and interact with staff, that, you know, we can sort of coach them a little bit and say, you know, if you go there, you're going to have some problems.
Certainly. I don't, I can't speak for all staff, but I can certainly say that we feel it's, you know, certainly it's, Morningside's right to move there, unfortunately, under the zoning agreement and such. It is a difficult location, and I think that Morningside has recognized that now. And we're pleased that they're talking about potentially making a non-smoking house. There are problems with those locations, particularly in light of this lot size and the low setbacks. It makes a difficult operation, certainly from our standpoint, but ultimately, it's Morningside's determination, so long as they're consistent with the law and meet the parameters of the zoning agreement, which will be enforced, that they can cite, consistent with the zoning agreement, where they choose.
And Leslie, do you mind if I follow up? So, the question was asked, what ability do we have to enforce? What are the sanctions and penalties that can be exacted in the event of violation of the agreement?
Thank you. This is actually something, a very important part of this agreement that was modified after the planning commission heard the matter. It's a dramatically more effective agreement, and Morningside agreed to this after they had previously entered into an understanding with the city when we began processing this zoning agreement. The sober living by the sea agreement created at best an ambiguity on our use of certain types of administrative remedies that we have under our police powers. They accepted a clarification that clearly gives us the power to utilize our administrative remedies if they're in violation of any of the zoning codes or other provisions that exist in our laws. They further accepted the right for us to take action to potentially terminate the development agreement or zoning agreement, whereas previously to that, we would only have been able to make, take an action for what's called specific performance. In other words, to get an order from the court telling them to comply. There are dramatically stronger remedies under this agreement that have been agreed to by Morningside that do not exist in the sober living agreement and did not exist at the time the planning commission heard it. In fact, staff heard what the comments of the publics were at the planning commission and took steps to negotiate new issues in the agreement, and Morningside willingly accepted those changes.
So, in summary, penalties can include any of notice of violation, fines, including escalating fines, as well as ultimately, potentially, the abrogation of the agreement by the city?
Yes, those all would exist for violations of the agreement.
Okay. So, does any other council member have anything they wish to say or questions to ask?
I think that there's a, looking at all the heads and the faces and the expressions, there is a general disbelief in terms of our enforcement. And... Obviously, that was an understatement for most of you. Can we comment on that and how we feel that we are doing and where we feel maybe we need to improve?
Certainly, certainly you can. And yes, there, I'm sure that there's a feeling, particularly in the community, that it's, the enforcement hasn't proven to be adequate. I understand that. We'll look at use of modifying resources that can be applied to it. Right now, we have the code enforcement line, and we have Mr. Cosley line, who is taking active action with respect to all complaints related to sober living facilities. And our office is directly involved in that. It is a resource issue. I wish we could respond more quickly. I think we need to evaluate the resources that are available for that and make further recommendations on that area.
Well, I understand we're going to get a report on sober living and our one-year thing. So will we have, will you be able to provide more information as to our overall enforcement? And can we see some, actually, statistics?
Yes, certainly. We can address the issue of available enforcement resources at the time of the sober living review next council meeting on November 9th.
But also, you know, the number, do we have records of the number of complaints we've gotten?
Oh, we have.
Do we have, and numbers have been followed up, and what the results have been? Do we have that sort of information?
We have all that information. They're all in matrices related to the specific locations, as well as with respect to the overall compliance throughout the entire time. We've checked with the police department. We've followed up on parole and probationers. We've dealt with traffic citations. We've dealt with every complaint that exists in permit plus. We've brought issues that had not been brought to sober living's attention before to their attention and negotiated ways to get them brought into compliance. We've dealt with the Villa Way facility. We've dealt with the parking lot across the street.
Wait, timeout.
Yeah.
You're going to get, when are we going to get this?
You'll have it next city council meeting.
Okay, so we'll get some answers then, and perhaps we can draw some new conclusions.
Absolutely.
Okay. Dave, if you have any further comments, you're welcome to make them, and then I'll sum up.
I didn't want to leave without commenting to Dr. Rosener, who is, I think she's asking a question that's very fair to ask. Why does it look like this is just happening to Newport Beach? And a number of you that have been involved in this issue a long time will have realized that it's not just happening in Newport Beach. Remember, just in our own, and if you're wondering, is this just happening to Lido? No. Corona Omar has three homes. Newport Heights has three. West Santa Ana Heights has four. The area where, of West Newport and Central Balboa has the most. And it's probably in the range of 12 to 15, counting sober living facilities. This has been a dramatic change, though, since 2007. There's been a dramatic reduction in the amount of sober living and recovery facilities. But, and then, just if you're curious, go ahead and look on ADP's website and look for the number of licensed homes in any community. Costa Mesa has more than we do. And there's reasons for that. There's a different economic base there. There's different clientele they're focusing on. But, and when you look at, for instance, Costa Mesa's numbers, know that they're not even counting the unlicensed facilities. They're just counting the licensed facilities. So, the state has determined, whether we like it or not, that there is a residential treatment model in California that they will encourage. We've gone up to the legislature for three different years in a row to try to change that, to try to give cities slightly more rights than we have today. Each time, I think Mr. Hen went up, and we were successful in actually getting two votes in a committee. That was the first time we ever got more than zero votes in a committee. So, we do take this issue seriously. We have invested a lot of money in it the last three years. When it comes to enforcement, if I see and the council sees that we need more code enforcement officers, we have the budget to do that. We can do that. With that, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Let me, let me see if I can make a few summary comments. Again, we're not in a position to make a decision tonight. We are in a position to continue to bear down on this issue over the coming days and see if we can provide for a better outcome for the residents, perhaps as well as for the residents of the facility at 533. It's very clear to me that there has been a series of judgmental lapses and errors here of some magnitude that have resulted in where we are right now. I'll have to be honest with you. We were on a track with Morningside where we were the beneficiary of real and substantial cooperation to get a development agreement with improved standards, substantially improved standards. And it seems now as if that's all been thrown into a cocked hat with the development over the last, developments over the last several days. I personally regret, perhaps as much as anyone in this room, the circumstance that we find ourselves in today. We're going to do our best to make it better within the context of the laws that we have to observe and the contracts that are in place. I live on the peninsula. My daughter and my only three grandchildren live on Lido Isle. This is as a personal issue to me as it is to anyone in this room, perhaps except for the people that live right next door to these facilities. And I think it's an issue that's of high importance to everyone up here on this council. As to the issue of whether the city council or the city staff is in league with the operators, I guess I can understand why people might speculate about that. The truth of the matter is, we have spent the last four years dealing with this issue on behalf of our residents to make it better, to establish a balance. We've spent $2 million, close to it, of the city's money. Fortunately, it looks now like that money wasn't wasted because we've made substantial progress in court defending our actions. The truth of the matter is, the ordinance that we have is by far and away the most aggressive, cutting-edge ordinance, at least in the state of California, maybe in the United States. So this council, through a series of seven to nothing votes over the last four years, has devoted the time and the energy and the resources to make this problem better. And we have done that. We started out with seven or 800 beds. We're down to 200, 250, somewhere in that range. We've made very substantial progress. I realize as I say that, that doesn't mean much to the people that live next to 533 via SUD. I can't, I can't change the circumstance of what has happened. We can work hard to make it better, and we will do that in your behalf, just as we have been doing for the last four years. So you have that pledge, at least on behalf of the city council and myself personally. So thank you all for coming down, and I mean that sincerely. Thank you for coming down. We always thank our residents for their input, and we appreciate it. We hope that we can make some progress. If you would, if you would also be so kind as to go ahead and quietly leave, we do have other business. I'm sorry, ma'am? Actually, no. Well, well, I would be happy to speak with you after council is over, and that shouldn't be more than, we are still going on. It shouldn't be more than 15, 20 minutes, I would think, and we'll be done. Otherwise, you may, you're certainly welcome to call me or email me. So, may I ask, may I ask that people please promptly exit the room if you have no further Patina and Neil, if you wouldn't mind, could you carry your conversation on outside? Okay. We started out to take public comment on non-agenda items, which we certainly have done quite a bit of. We're happy to do more of that. Does anyone have public comments on non-agenda items? If we wouldn't mind finding somebody that could close those doors, that would be great. Yes, sir, if you would state your name, please.
My name again is Jim Mosher.
Yes, sir.
I lack the eloquence of the earlier speakers, and I appreciate their concern about the city sometimes following rules in a way that citizens have trouble comprehending. This council has expressed its interest in charter reform, and in connection with following of rules, I thought it would be appropriate to bring to your attention three instances that I know of in which this council's own current actions seem to be in violation of the city charter. Charter section 407 requires that the council hold two regular meetings each month. Many city charters contain the same language, and the councils in those cities have honored that requirement. Newport Beach has not held a second meeting in December since 1982, nor have they held a second meeting in August since 2006. Charter section 412 requires that the title of every ordinance to be read to the, be read to the public before the ordinance is adopted. I've reviewed the videos of selected council meetings archived on the city website back as far as 2005, and I've never seen the title of an ordinance adopted and the consent calendar being read to the public. As a matter of fact, I am not even sure what the title of the 500-page ordinance adopted tonight is. Charter section 421 requires that the council approve contracts, yet as many of you know and as I know from personal experience, I know of at least one contract for private use of city-owned property that has never been approved at a notice public meeting. To me, all of these practices violate the city charter. I would submit that if the present council is interested seriously in charter reform, that instead of measure V, it should be asking voters either to amend the charter to permit these practices or to alter its own practices to conform to the charter. Thank you.
Does the city attorney wish to respond to any of that?
I'm familiar with the issues related to the charter. I don't agree with Mr. Mosher that we're in violation of the charter, and there are numerous different, numerous different reasons. For example, under 421 with contracts, it also expressly authorizes the council to delegate the authority that entered into contracts, which the council has done through its policy F-14 as well of the ordinances. So there's a lot more to it than just making a flat reading of the charter. I think that's, there's way more to the issues than Mr. Mosher's identified, but I can understand in bringing these questions up based upon his reading of the charter.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to current business, which is item number 17, having to do with the defeasance of the 1998 library certificates of participation. Do we have a staff report on this?
We do, if you'd wish. Mayor Protem and council members, again, we're asking you tonight to adopt a resolution that would authorize us to defees the 1998 library COPs, authorize us to execute an escrow agreement, and then in effect approve the budget transfer associated with that. Tracy McCraner's here. Dan Matashevitz is here as well, if you have questions about this.
Does council wish to have a presentation on this issue?
No.
Seeing no enthusiasm for that, do we have any questions for staff regarding this issue?
I'll give you a motion.
Move the item. Be happy to accept a motion. Do we have a second? All right. May we have public comments on this item? Seeing none, let's vote.
The motion carried unanimously with Mayor Curry absent.
And that brings us to item number 18, having to do with the transfer of development rights in North Newport Center planned community. Do we have a brief staff report on this?
I'll turn that over to Jim Campbell, planning director.
Two minutes.
What I might ask is if the council wants a presentation, but in a nutshell, we're basically moving some office square footage from Block 100 within Newport Center. It's consistent with the general plan. Traffic works. Traffic works.
Does anybody else feel like this is a shell game? We keep moving all these pieces around. The thing I want to know is, are we ending up with the same amount of square footage? I mean, I know they're in different spots, but the total, we're not changing the total?
We're not increasing the allowable intensity in the traffic. They're trip-neutral, and the traffic analysis prepared, and the traffic engineer's here. If you would like to answer questions, doesn't create any traffic impacts, and so.
I'd just like to ask the Irvine Company, do you think maybe this might be it, or are we going to have a few more changes?
They paid good money to have these changes.
Yes.
And they're developing, well, they're going to, at least.
Yes. I have an hour presentation, which I know. This just reflects, as we were talking about, four or five blocks of development, and as we fine-tune our development strategy in all these five blocks, we're, as we get closer to construction, to drawings, we have to have the exact square footage or at least enough there, so if we don't use it all, we'll send it back or move it around. So, it just reflects what we're trying to do is to, hopefully, we can actually pull a permit and give those development fees that Mr. Selig and Rozansky did such a good job on. Thank you for trying to get these out of somebody else. So, our intent is, this, I believe, at least with regard to the Block 600 office building that we're going to hopefully pull a permit next year, this is it on that. As to, in the future, moving square footage around for other purposes, no, this won't be the end as we fine-tune our total, but we can guarantee it. It is what's allowed in the general plan, is no additional square footage, it is just moving what you've already approved.
I'll move the action.
All right. We, may we have public comment on this item?
So, my name is Laura Curran. So, this was actually the item that I meant to ask for a picture on earlier, but I'm glad we saw it on the other project. So, there's probably a lot of good about this project, but I'll be honest, I just, you know, as we move along kind of in the theme of better planning minutes, if we could also have more descriptive diagrams in the report, because, you know, let's be honest, I look at these at the beginning of my workday or in the middle of my workday, and so I tried to figure out, after looking at this map, what Nancy's question was, are we talking same net square feet, increase, decrease? And then I tried to figure out, okay, will there be office buildings? Will there be condos? Will there be restaurants, which, since I live close by, you know, could be cool? Maybe I could buy a condo, or, you know, or I could go to a restaurant, or there'd be a walking path. But honestly, from this, I had a hard time telling. So, there's probably a lot of good here, but for the residents' help, it'd be great if we could take things like this, which we all know I love spreadsheets, and also translate them into this, because it helps people get a real understanding of what we're talking about. So, that's my suggestion, and that makes it easier for residents than to go, hey, you know, this looks like a good project, because now I understand it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, any further discussion? Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that finishes the regular agenda. I suppose it's time for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do I hear any motions for reconsideration? I hear none.
Can we move to reconsider that Reagan commission?
As we, to reconsider what?
Only if you voted in favor of it.
Bailing side.
All right. If we can, if we can get a little more serious, I would like to adjourn the meeting tonight in honor of a couple of people who have passed away recently. The first of which is Patricia Pat Herzog. Pat passed away on October 1st in her Corona Del Mar home. Pat was born in Japan and spent the first decade of her life in Japan and China. After moving to the U.S., she attended school in Massachusetts and then studied at Oberlin College before attending the University of Texas and earning a degree in economics. In addition to being a wife and mother, Pat worked as a claims adjuster and a news reporter until she noticed a matchbook cover ad for LaSalle University in Chicago. She studied law through its correspondence school and passed the bar in 1957. She was the eighth woman accepted to the Orange County Bar. Pat served as the Legal Aid Society's first counsel before going into private practice. She became famous for a 1982 divorce case she argued in the California Supreme Court called Sullivan versus Sullivan. The case prompted legislation in two states and became required reading in law schools. Pat was a founding member of the American Civil Liberties Union, Orange County chapter, and was named Attorney of the Year in 1994 by the Orange County Women Lawyers Association. Pat was preceded in death by her husband Haskell Shapiro. She is survived by her children Lynn, Paul, and Reed, stepchildren Charlie and Chris, four grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. Do any council members wish to add any comments to that?
Just, she was a neighbor of my father's, and he had a great deal of respect and liking for her. She had a terrific personality, and her family was great. We used to surf with the kids. Nice family.
Okay. The second memoriam is for Richard Dick Stevens. Dick died October 14th at his Newport Beach home. Born in Long Beach, Dick attended high school in South Pasadena and received football and track scholarships to UC Berkeley. As a running back for Cal's football team, Dick played in the Rose Bowl three times. After graduating from college, he served in the U.S. Army in Japan and Korea. Dick returned to Southern California and began what became a long and successful career in business. Among the many highlights, he was co-owner and president of the Balboa Bay Club during the 1960s and '70s. He was Disneyland Hotels President and Chief Executive from '77 to '82. He served as president of Rather Hotels, where he developed a plan to lease the Queen Mary and display the Spruce Goose as tourist attractions. He co-founded the Bellport Group, which operated marinas throughout the world, I believe, here in Newport Beach as well. He was commissioner for the 1984 Los Angeles Summer Olympics. He was president and CEO of the Los Angeles Express, a United States Football League franchise in 1985, and he developed the resort proj, developed resort projects throughout the world. Dick was preceded in death by his first wife, Joyce Whistler Stevens. He is survived by his wife of 33 years, Joan Stevens, his daughter Sandra and her husband, Peter Weston, his son Chris, and his wife, Jaun Stevens, and stepchildren Lisa and Brad Levine. Does anyone wish to add to that? In view of that, we are adjourned.
Aren't we adjourning into closed session?
Into closed session. You're right.